Welcome everyone to the Pembroke City Commission Meeting. Today, we're having a workshop, two workshops actually, one on Charter Review and one on Budget. They will go consecutive and then from there, we will begin our regularly scheduled City Commission Meeting. Madam Clark, we can call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Good.
I'm here.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Here.
Mayor Castillo.
Here.
City Manager Dodge.
Here.
City Attorney Goran.
I'm here.
We have a call.
Thank you very much. Mr. City Attorney, if you could, why don't you take a couple of minutes and set the tone for the discussion we're about to have.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to assist you this evening. A couple of observations. In the backup, you'll see a memorandum that our office prepared, which sets forth some of the terms and conditions of where we are this evening. But more importantly, you'll have before you a report that was issued by the Charter Review Board, was never fully accepted by the Commission because it was never a meeting to accept it per se, but it was prepared through our office, through the City Attorney's Office. And as you know, the city does, under the city's charter, under Article VII, has a Charter Review Board, or did have a Charter Review Board. And in the backup, you'll find certain recommendations that were offered up by the Charter Review Board at their meeting of August the 28th of 2023. So in the backup, you'll see our memo with regard to the considerations being given. At the time, you may remember that there was some discussion about seeking ballot access in either March or later. As you know, ultimately, the matter was deferred, and the end result of which is that the March date passed and the November access point passed. There is ballot access, which would confirm with the supervisory general counsel within the past several weeks for the March 2025 election being conducted in Broward County. There is a general municipal election being conducted in Broward. If the city were to seek ballot access in March of 2025, the city would need to submit referendum documentation, which means an ordinance or ordinances with ballot questions no later than the end of, or mid to late December of this year, working backwards from there. So, the Charter Review Board met on several occasions and ultimately made their unanimous recommendations on August the 28th, and in the backup, you'll see where those recommendations are. And they're broken up into two separate parts, some of which are referred to as being substantive and some of which are referred to as being housekeeping. The housekeeping ones are the easier ones. Let me just refer you to those if I can. The housekeeping ones begin on page five of the report, and there are several versions of that, most of which, if I may offer, relate to grammatical changes, some capitalizations, some gender-neutral issues. And from our legal perspective, if the Commission were to look at these items essentially, except for perhaps the item relating to the City Attorney's Review of Documents at Article IV on page eight, with regard to signing off on certain instruments the city would otherwise approve. Much of the recommendations that were referred to in the report were principally, again, what we call "housekeeping," any one of which, or any number of which, could be adopted by ordinance of the City Commission and would not require a referendum. The difference between those which are non-substantive and those which are substantive, substantive issues would require voter approval. And voter approval means having a referendum election potentially in March of 2025, the end result of which it would be a citywide special election where all the voters have the right to be heard on ballot ordinances that would be adopted by the Commission. And there are several in the backup that may be worth, Mayor, if you'll permit me, just to go over a couple of them on the pages, beginning on page three and essentially ending on page five. The substantive items that are referred to here begin with Article IV entitled Administration, referencing the City Manager. And if you look at subsection 4.01, subsection two, the language it's added by the Charter Review Board under Qualifications. The current code with Charter would say the City Manager shall have a bachelor's degree and three years' experience as a City Manager or Assistant City Manager, and the Charter Review Board added the language, "or three years comparable experience as determined by the City Commission." That's one of the changes. The second change is at Article IV, under Administration as well, in connections with the City Manager's appointment, removal, and compensation. The added language here is that, as opposed to being what's called a "precatory hearing," the language on subsection B of 4.02, "removal, the Commission may remove the City Manager by a four-fifth vote of all Commission members upon demand by the City Manager. A public hearing, they struck the word "may" and inserted the word "must," be held prior to a final vote on the removal of the City Manager." That was a substantive issue that they considered and voted to approve. Next page, beginning at the top of page four, there are several his or hers which are contained within that article that are part of the other article I just read from. The next article of change occurs at Article IV, under Administration, again, section 4.03, Acting City Manager. The Charter Board deleted the reference to disability, so that in references to, by letter, filed with the Commission, the City Manager shall designate a qualified city administrative officer to exercise that struck the word "his," made it "their powers," and perform the duties of the City Manager, capital C, during their, as opposed to his or her temporary absence. They struck the word "or disability" throughout this section. So, in essence, during each absence, strike the word "disability," the Commission may remove the designated acting City Manager by an affirmative vote of four members of the City Commission and appoint another officer of the city by a four-fifth vote to serve until the City Manager returns from their absence and delete the word "disability." Again, a substantive change recommended by the Charter Board. Next, in getting towards the end, this is referencing Article IV and the Department of Finance, specifically the Finance Director. If you look at the bottom of page four, it talks about qualifications and requirements. "The Director of Finance shall have a four-year college degree with a major in accounting." The Charter Board struck the word "and" and inserted the word "or" such that the Finance Director shall have a four-year college degree with a major in accounting or finance, and then two years' experience in municipal accounting, taxation, budgeting, and financial control. And last but not least, on the top of page five, the other substantive change offered up by the Charter Board begins with the Charter Board, Article VII. And one of the substantive changes that are made, the actual composition of total members of 11 is not being requested for change, but what is being requested for change is that the commissioners who make their two appointees under this proposal would have to be from the city commissioners' respective district. So the mayor would appoint three individuals, and each commissioner shall appoint two individuals with the added language at the top of page five in Article VII, "from the city commissioners' respective district." And when you look at that last item, that is the substantive changes that were recommended by the Charter Board, the balance of which, beginning at the middle of page five, are, as the mayor and the Commission asked for, are housekeeping. Housekeeping, again, is something which is non-legally substantive and could be accomplished by a City Commission ordinance, not required to be considered by the voters or the electorate as a referendum issue, but could be done locally, as it were, by the mayor and Commission if it chose to do so. Couple of more observations, if I may, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Clearly, under the city charter, and want to make sure you're clear on this, under the duties and functions of the Charter Review Board at Article VII, section 7.06, the Pembroke Pines Charter Review Board is hereby authorized to review and to study the Charter of Government of the City Pembroke Pines and to recommend changes to the city charter to the City Commission. And she'll take an affirmative vote by a supermajority of the membership of the Charter Review Board to present recommendations to the City Commission for review. Just as a matter of interesting history, which I know the manager remembers, the Charter Board in years past actually had ballot access independent of the City Commission, which was changed by referendum. That means that the Charter Board, back in the day, actually could independently place items on the ballot for consideration. Not much unlike the Broward County Charter Review Commission, which also has ballot access without the county commission's approval. But in this situation, the work of the Charter Board, which has been legally completed, they're technically out of business, as it were. They've made recommendations. They're advisory-only. This Commission can make several different decisions this evening. You could accept their report formally, on the record, during the agenda item which comes up later during the regular agenda, and thank them for their service. The Commission has the ability to accept their recommendations and to direct our office, as the City Attorney's Office, to prepare Charter amendments that are substantive or the housekeeping items, or anything in between, which means you could actually legally, with all due respect to the Charter Board, accept the recommendation but take no action. It's not legally required that you do so. There's nothing in the city charter which mandates that the City Commission take affirmative action to accept the recommendations. They are simply recommendations. That's the circle of information. I'm happy to go into detail further, but at the end of the day, on the dais, you'll find a copy of the city charter. You have the report issued, but not approved or accepted by the City Commission and a dichotomy on the record as to what is both substantive and what is housekeeping in nature. And I'm happy to answer any questions, or Jacob as well.
Thank you, City Attorney. Thank you, City Attorney. So, there are some housekeeping items that we can do by ordinance that don't have to go before the voters. And then there are some specific recommendations that the Charter Review Board, who were very thankful for the work that they did, and I will expand on that when the item comes up under the agenda. And then there are any other items that the Commission wishes to propose with respect to the charter. So, that's a good way, I think, with your indulgence, to structure the discussion. So, I guess first on the agenda is the housekeeping items. As the City Attorney indicated, those housekeeping items are either grammatical changes or gender-neutral changes. Does anyone have any, and by the way, anything that we do here will require an ordinance, which will have to have two readings, obviously. So, this isn't the only time that you'll see this information. Are there any, is there any need to discuss any of the housekeeping issues? And we'll start with Vice Mayor. Did you have any housekeeping concerns with respect to the items?
I'd like to defer for a moment on the items, on the substantive item, but on the housekeeping, I'm fine.
Okay, the housekeeping is good.
Thank you, sir.
How about you, Commissioner?
Housekeeping is good, Fernando.
Commissioner Hernandez?
I'm fine with the housekeeping.
Commissioner Schwartz?
As long as we have an English major to review the grammatical, I guess I'm okay with that.
Okay, one. All right. So, at the regular agenda, I suppose what we should do is entertain a motion in a second to direct City Attorney to write an ordinance, this will not go before the voters, that we can adopt. There'll be two readings of that in order to do the housekeeping items. So now, we go to the substantive items. And here's City Attorney, in no particular order. I'd like you to read again which ones, and we will discuss those one at a time. And once we're finished with those, we'll get into the discussion of any additional items that the Commission, at the pleasure of the Commission.
Thank you, Mayor. If you take a look on page three of the report, under substantive, the first proposed substantive change relates to the City Manager. It's Article Number Four, under Administration. Look at subsection two of section 4.01. Let me read that section to the record. Under the current charter, which is on the dais this evening, "under the terms of qualifications, the City Manager shall have a bachelor's degree," or baccalaureate, depending where you're from, "and three years' experience as a City Manager or Assistant City Manager." The substantive change proposed by the Charter Board is adding the words "or three years comparable experience as determined by the City Commission." That is a substantive change in section 4.01, subsection two of the city charter as proposed.
Comments on that, Vice Mayor?
Yes, on this one in particular, Mr. Mayor, I am, I guess, in agreement with the comparable experience as determined by the City Commission. One of the things that I was very concerned about in this particular section is that, you know, we are in an area now that has Fortune 500 companies, that have, you know, major CEOs. We are no longer the city of Pembroke Pines in which, when this charter was originated. We are now, you know, we're going to see a budget tonight of over $600 million just for the budget, and that does not include the schools. And so, you know, we're looking at an organization that is well beyond, you know, standard City Manager type of function. Most City Managers don't get to be a superintendent. Most City Managers don't get to manage a budget that's over, you know, over half a billion dollars. You know, I think we need to, you know, keep our focus on, you know, what is the best solution for this city as we move forward because we are now in a situation where we need, you know, good management. We have good management from the City Manager that we have today. He's grew with the city. He knows the city very well. He's very, very skilled. He knows more than anybody I don't know that we could ever bring in, would ever know. But there is going to be a time where that decision's going to have to be for us on this dais, to choose somebody else, and I think that we need to continue to have flexibility. So, and one other thing, too, I just don't know if three years is sufficient time. We say three years of experience. You know, I think, you know, maybe something more like a five-years experience is a little bit more palatable in terms of ensuring that we get a level of experience that is going to be comparable to what we are anticipating in order to be able to manage, you know, nearly a $3.25 billion budget.
So, is it three years' experience as a City Manager or Assistant City Manager and five years' comparable experience is determined, or is it five for both?
I think it should be five, period.
For both?
Right.
Okay. Commissioner Rodriguez?
Thank you. I do agree on the greater timeframe. I think, like, most cities have about a four-year, you know, election cycle, things like that. So, making it, obviously, more than that is preferable. I do get what Vice Mayor Good is saying on the fact that we're growing as a bigger city. We're more comparable to larger areas. However, I'm okay with leaving it on the three years comparable, but kind of putting it out there that a business and a city function in different ways. Similar, but it's like a different tact that you have to have for a city, in my opinion. And so, I'm okay with leaving it at this discretion, but just for us to kind of understand that the superintendent bit is obviously very important. We don't have many cities, I think, across the nation that we could grab someone with to have this experience. So, just to kind of keep that in mind, but definitely the five years seemed more reasonable to me.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Unless I'm not reading it correctly, I don't see any reference, when you look at City Manager, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. City Attorney or anybody, any reference to duties as superintendent.
Mayor Spahn, there?
Yes, you are correct. There's no specific reference in the current.
There is, there's no specific reference in the current city charter that references that assignment or that particular function. Okay, I think that's a problem, just because you're no longer, you're not just a manager of a city of $171,600 million budget, or whatever it is that we'll be voting on soon. You're also the superintendent of six schools, plus one that you have a partnership with Florida State University. I think there has to be some kind of mention about those duties, because you're approving separate budgets and you're dealing with schools and ordering textbooks and educational background. So, that's one point I'd like to raise. I see both Commissioner Rodriguez and Vice Mayor Good's points on comparable experience and three to five years. Honestly, I'm not going to fight over that, whatever the board's will would be, whether it's three or five is fine. My issue is, there should be reference to the educational responsibilities that the manager of this city has, not just his duties, or her duties, one day it will be her, I guess, and, and what they would be doing overseeing the administration of government.
So, one of the things that, that comes to mind with respect to that is that currently our city manager serves in a dual capacity as city manager and superintendent, but it's entirely possible that a future city manager would appoint a superintendent. So, the question would be, do we, would the superintendent be considered like a department head? So, for example, there are many department heads that aren't mentioned in the charter. The only ones that are mentioned in the charter that I know of are the finance director, maybe the police chief, I'm not sure. But they could certainly be a section in the charter for superintendent, but then that would be a substantive change, I believe, the City Attorney, that would have to go to the ballot.
Now, Mayor, the only reason why, you're right, they could be a director under the future city manager. So, I don't know how to word that, but you still oversee a superintendent if you're city manager, or am I wrong? Could I, I mean, I don't know how.
The city manager would oversee.
Would still oversee the superintendent.
Right. So, it would be, it would be like, it is a department now, he's just operating in a dual capacity.
I don't know how you word it, but I, my recommendation is that we add some of that, because I would say, the current city manager has a lot on his plate. He runs the city, and he runs the school system, and leaving it completely blank and not mentioning it in any way, even if there is the future possibility that a city manager could designate Superintendent X as a department head, I just think that's, that's critical. We're not just running a city, we're running a school district.
Okay. Any other comment on that? No, I was asking you, and then I'll come back.
Oh, no, other than that, no, I'm good.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you. About 12 years ago, I looked at the superintendent role, and one day I envisioned one of our senior principals assuming that role at some future point. The way it works, Commissioner Hernandez, is city manager Dodge allows our principals to guide all policy. They're already the decision-makers. And when it comes to the final signature, it's his, the city manager Dodge's signature, but the, the principals are the ones who are running our schools. That's the first point. Number two, I don't see our electorate supporting changing the charter for superintendent because of the dynamics of public school charter-school conversations. And so, it would create a, a, a crack in our ability to run government if the voters rejected the superintendent. So, I think it's, I think it would be best for us to leave well enough alone. The, we have, we have in-house talent with respect to, if there were a need, I can, I can think of several people who would be able to step up to the plate today if asked, with respect to three years or five years. Approximately, between two and three years ago, I had a discussion with the city manager about making sure that the bench is, is well-prepared for, for a future departure. City manager, to his credit, has selected some really, really talented people in our Right now, based on five years, if passed today, they, none of them will be eligible, which would require us to go outside. So selfishly, I can't support five years in today's climate. Perhaps a future ballot at some future time may be appropriate, but now is not the time for that, for that discussion. With respect to private industry and that sort of thing, look, if you look at the history of city managers, they're like NFL coaches, they're gone every three years. And so, they rotate from one city to another, and you, and in most cases, they move on because they're just ineffective. And so, it comes down to, remember, Mayor, remember when Commissioner Schechter says, 12 years ago, when we were discussing whether or not a city manager should be a corporation or an individual, he says, "It's just a matter of price," right? And we know who you are based on the price. And so, I don't want to cheapen the success that we've had here in the city of Pembroke Pines. And certainly, a future city commission, at some future point, will have a decision to make. What makes me uncomfortable about the language is having five elected officials, three-fifths of which would determine whether or not a CEO of a toy company could run the city of Pembroke Pines because of their portfolio size.
We're not on that yet.
Or, or if, or if, or if we would be looking in-house. So, I'm tending to actually strike that discretion of the commission.
We're not on that yet. No, we're just on the first sign.
Of the three to five years?
Yes.
Okay. Well, then you won't have to come back to me on the other one, then.
Oh, yeah. We're going to go through each one of them.
No, that one provision. So, so the, so those are my comments. I think three is, three is fine. The superintendent language is not necessary.
Okay. So, so far, we have a discussion between three and five and the issue of the superintendent. Vice Mayor, you had a comment?
Yes, sir. You actually brought up a very, very interesting point about a potential for a superintendent to be appointed independent of the city manager's function. I am in full support that if there is a superintendent, separate position created, then we, as the governing board of the school system, should have that position report directly to us, not through the city manager. Right now, it's, we have a city manager that has a dual role. Either we keep it that way, where the dual role stays with the city manager, where it is the city manager and the superintendent, but if there is a separation of those responsibilities, then we are the governing board of the school system, and we need to have a direct report for the superintendent. It's no different than if we were having, if we had some sort of dependent district, and many agencies, government agencies have dependent districts, or even CRAs, which is separate from the general government, where the city commission sits as either a CRA board, or they sit as the dependent district board. So, that I'm very, I feel very strongly about. I just also, too, want to just, just intercheck, you know, I made reference to, you know, the CEOs of Biz Corporate 500, whatever, but let's not forget that we have state, department, division leaders that could possibly participate in this. You know, we actually have superintendents in major school systems that could actually sit in this capacity, too. So, I didn't want to restrict it to just the CEO type. It is other government agencies that have a broader span than what even we do here in Pembroke Pines. So, but, Mr. Mayor, certainly for the superintendent, if, if, if there is, I guess we need to probably do address that. Either we keep it with the city manager as a dual role, or if we separate it, I would like that to be a consideration of a direct report to this commission.
Mr. Mayor, forgive the interruption for me, if you will. You may need to briefly recess this session under state law, chapter 200 of the state statutes. The Department of Revenue likes to make sure you start your public hearings with regard to TRIM compliance, which is both tax and millage at the time certain that's been designated. You have to probably do that, and you're approaching 6 o'clock. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Okay. It starts at 6?
Yes. An advertised for 6 under the TRIM law, chapter 200.
Commissioner Rodriguez, we will pick up with you as soon as the.
Thank you, Mayor.
Can I start it now?
You can, have to recess the workshop.
Okay, we're going to recess the workshop. We'll pick up with Commissioner Rodriguez when we reconvene. And now, we're going to call the budget workshop to order. City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Good?
Vice Mayor Good?
I am present.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Present.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Here.
Commissioner Short?
Here.
Mayor Castillo?
Here.
City Manager Dodge?
Here.
City Attorney Goren?
I'm here.
We have quorum.
Thank you very much. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, I read into the record the purpose of the meeting, if you will?
Please.
Thank you, Mayor. Under the BH, which is the budget hearing, it is the first public hearing on adopting a tentative budget and proposed millage rate for the fiscal year 2024-2025 for the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida. For the purposes of the record, it is to recompute and to publicly announce the proposed operating millage rate of 5.6690, which is 7.73% above the rollback millage rate of 5.2622, and the debt service millage rate of 0.3208, as well as amend and to adopt a tentative budget for the general fund, the utility fund, and all other funds of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, and to invite the public to speak regarding the proposed millage and budget. Following the public hearing, Mayor and Commission will be the first reading of the ordinance with regard to millage, which is item number one, followed by item number two, which is the first reading of the ordinance with regard to the budget, and that would then end the requirements of chapter 200 for the TRIM compliance. Thank you, Mayor.
This is a public hearing on, on the proposed budget. Commissioners, do you have anything to say before we go to the public? Hearing, none. Does anyone in the public wish to be heard on this matter? Anyone in this public wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, item number one.
So, public meeting, public hearing is closed, or?
Yes.
Public hearing is closed, correct?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number one on the agenda, which follows the public hearing as required by chapter 200 of the Florida statutes, governs TRIM compliance and has been notified to the public. It's a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number 2024-12 on first reading, and it reads as follows. Proposed ordinance number 2024-12 is an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, establishing the operating millage rate of 5.6690, or $5.6690 per $1,000 of taxable assessed property value, which is 7.73% above the rollback rate of the 5.2622 for the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, pursuant to the 2024-2025 city budget, in accordance with chapter 200 of the Florida statutes, and establishing the debt service millage rate of 0.3208 per debt service on the general obligation bonds approved by the electorate in the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing for effective date. Item one on the floor, Mr. Mayor, can I?
Is there a motion on the item? Motion by the Vice Mayor, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rodriguez. This, this item actually reduces the millage rate, Mr. Dodge, slightly from what it was last year. The total millage.
The total millage is less. In fact, over a 10-year period, this is the lowest rate we've ever had.
It's the lowest in 10 years. Thank you very, very much. Any further discussion? Any from, any from the audience? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Short?
Yes.
Mayor Castillo?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And for the public record, and for the Department of Revenue, who may pay attention to the video and the audio of this meeting, the second and final public hearing as required by state statute will be in these very chambers, September 18, 2024, at a time to be established at that particular point, on the notice, which I assume will be 6 o'clock or otherwise.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up, item number, you'll forgive me, Mayor, it is in fact set for 6 o'clock, if you will, 6 o'clock. Next up is item number two. This is the budget, which is driven by the millage. Also, a matter of public hearing, should there be any members of the public that choose to be heard, is 2024-13, which is a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number 2024-13 on first reading. Proposed ordinance 2024-13, for the record, is an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, adopting the budget for fiscal year 2024-2025, and adopting the five-year capital improvement program for the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, in accordance with section 5.08 of the city's charter, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and finally, providing for effective date. Item number two on the floor, 2024-13. Thank you, Mayor and Commission.
Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Moved by the Vice Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rodriguez. Any discussion on the dais?
Just one item.
Yes.
It has nothing to do with the actual budget, but, Mr. Manager, you see these exhibits with the dollar?
Yeah.
Where a general fund goes? Thinking like a communicator, that would be a beautiful visual to post on our channels, so folks who ask questions, where do my tax dollars go? They see this?
Yes, we have one, both on the revenue and on the expenditures, and we can post that.
Yeah, this, these, I mean, the actual dollar.
Correct.
Okay. If we do that, I think if we do it more than once, not just posting it once on our social media channels, that answers a lot of questions, and the five of us could actually push that out.
Yes, we will.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Any from the public? Anyone wish to speak on the side? Seeing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Short?
Yes.
Mayor Castillo?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And for the record, Mayor and Commission, the item did, was adopted, item number two, it is the budget ordinance. The second and final public hearing as required by state statute will be conducted in these chambers on Wednesday, September 18, at 6:00 p.m., in conjunction with the millage ordinance as well, under chapter 200 of the Florida statutes, and then, Mr. Mayor and Commission, and the budget hearing issues affecting both millage and budget. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Reconvening the, the charter review discussion. Commissioner Rodriguez, you have the floor.
So, I just want to kind of clarify, maybe just for myself, but anybody else listening, one of the questions that we had about the superintendent position is either, one, placing it as part of the experience necessary, or, two, talking about making that position completely separate and putting that out to a vote. So, I just wanted to kind of put it out there that, from what I've been hearing, it's kind of two different questions.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think we'll get into this more once, once, once the item comes up on regular agenda, but I think, I think a point's been made that we're going to have to talk about the superintendent business.
Yeah, I think, even though they're, you're right, they're two different and very separate how we would construct this issues, but I think the Vice Mayor and I are on the same page in the sense that the superintendent is not addressed anywhere, and we run a school system. So, that was my, I don't think we're in disagreement, you and I, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but however we do it mechanically, I just, I feel it's important. We also want the future city manager to have that discretion, or the current city manager, if he decides to appoint a superintendent, I don't know, but to have the discretion as well. I am the person, or I am appointing someone, maybe that's part of what we discussed, but, because ultimately, he does sign everything as superintendent. He may have principals, he may have academic leaders, and they're all excellent, I've met every single one of them, but he's the one that actually is in charge of the school system, and in the future, it'll be someone else. So, that, that was my point. I think I agree with you, Vice Mayor.
Okay. Any further comments on, on this item? I think, I think we had a good conversation on the first one. The second one, City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. The second item relates to Article Four Administration, also affecting the city manager. The language begins at section 4.02, subsection B, on removal, and the language currently says the commission may remove the city manager by a four-fifths vote of all commission members upon demand by the city manager, a public hearing, and the language change here is, they changed the word "may" to "must." A public hearing must be held prior to a final vote on the removal of the city, city manager. That's the proposed substantive change in Article Four, section 4.02, subsection B, and that's the change from "may," which was, what's called legally, it's called "precatory," into a "must," which is a mandatory requirement. And there's some other housekeeping items that change further beyond that, but they're not substantive, except they are part of the section being modified. So, under the section 4.02, subsection B, changing "may" to "must."
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I've thought a lot about this particular item here. I will tell you from, and I'm okay to say it, from an experience in this industry, that a four-fifths vote is very rare, and it's very archaic, in my opinion. I mean, many years ago, when, you know, things were different, you know, four fifths probably made sense, but today, it's, it is a little bit different. And I think that certainly just a majority vote is most applicable here. Now, having said that, I want to say very clearly, though, we have a city manager that's very experienced, who's been here for an extremely long time, who I can tell you, I have complete confidence as we go forward, as long as he decides to stay. So, when I speak to this, I speak to anyone that is new to the position that we hire. And I don't know how this may be crafted in such a way, but I think that the existing, that Mr. Dodge, as the city manager today, you should continue to be grandfathered into a, you know, a four-one vote, but anybody that we select thereafter, I think we should have a little bit more, a lot more flexibility in terms of, of a three-two vote for either termination or, or as an appointment. So, I would like to see that to be a three-fifths, not a four-fifth. And the fact that we're giving, we're changing the potential, a hearing to a must, it even makes more sense to make it a three-two, not a four-fifth.
Okay. Commissioner Rodriguez?
I think I just agree with Vice Mayor's point.
Okay. Commissioner Hernandez?
I agree, and I also want to echo your point that this isn't about the current city manager, who's been very gracious with his time with me and walking me through city administration, and I honestly couldn't thank you and your team enough, but this is, looking at it in the future, four fifths, I certainly haven't served as long as Vice Mayor Good and the rest of you in government, but four fifths is a high bar to hire, and eventually, if termination is necessary, terminate. I think that's too high of a bar.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Mayor. I think the 402 doesn't go far enough. I don't think it would, it's, it's appropriate to have one charter officer under one set of rules, and other charter officers under a different set of rules. So, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with the recommendation from, that's on, that's being discussed right now, because it needs to include all charter officers. Number two, being the tie-breaking vote 12 years ago, four fifths and three fifths were on the table, and my, my vote was to leave it as four fifths. I don't find any local Broward County or Miami-Dade government that is stable with three fifths. I don't find any school board with, with similar math. One election should not decide the future of its residents when it comes to the manager, because we are a city manager, form of government. We have an imbalance of, of power. Once, every two years, we have three fifths of the commission up, and then two fifths of the commission up. It creates just a lot of uncertainty for a lot of different people. Now, we, if you've been, if you've been engaged in local government for as long as a lot of us at this table have, I don't want to point out specific cities, but I can tell you that three fifths changed their communities forever in the worst way. So, I can't support a three-fifths change for those reasons. We have, there's a reason why people move here, there's a reason why people invest their dollars here, there's a reason why our first responders choose to, choose to come here, and it's because of stability. And these are some of the comments that were made 12 years ago, when it was advocated for a change from four fifths to three fifths. So, that's, that's where I am on that issue. I think we need, if there's going to be a change, I like the word "must," because the other problem we see on TV a lot is, you'll have a personality conflict with administration, and then you'll see two elected officials, one makes a motion, one makes a second, they convince a third, and next thing you know, on Local 10, they say, oh, they just fired so-and-so tonight. We need to have a process, and some of that process is a cooling-off process. You notify the public that there's going to be a hearing. I like the word "must," but changing it from three to, from four to three is just not in my comfort zone, and I'm not taking this from, from my perspective. My, the residents who, who have elected me know my position. They also recognize that Pembroke Pines government can sometimes be a little slow in responding to things. And it just takes a board of commissioners, three votes to administer policy, and then things get done. You don't have to change the horse in order to get that to happen. All it takes is three of us to have a policy to make a change. So, I think that's just the best way of doing it. I've seen, I've seen local governments where you have a city manager, form of government, and you, you may have an elected official, one of the five, has just a really strong personality, and just wants to bully their way through and, and hammer, and hammer city manager to the point that they become the de facto strong individual. We, we're not that city. So, for those reasons, I would be advocating at the appropriate time not to make the change for, for the, for the makeup of voting, but certainly, I would love to have the opportunity to have a required hearing, should there be a, a termination discussion at some future point.
Yeah, I'm going to chime in on this as well. I, I was also here when it went to four fifths. It was three fifths for the vast majority of the city's time, and it went to four fifths. I was never quite convinced of it. I voted in favor of the four fifths. It was unanimous vote, because the, the other four seemed to think that this was something that, that was needed, and I believe that when we put things, to the extent that we can, when we put things in front of the voters, it should be unanimous. But I've had my reservations. City manager works as a pleasure of the city commission, and I think it's important, if the city manager can't keep the confidence of three, of five members when it, when it comes to doing day-to-day business, I think it's, I think it's time for the change, for a change. So, I, I don't have a problem with the, with, with the three fifths vote. It's the rest of it that sort of gets to me. All of this adding of specific due process, as if that's ever going to happen, city manager who's asked to leave will never ask for a hearing, because they'll never get a job again. I mean, it's just, it's, it's, it's not even practical. So, to have, to have all of this, to have all this due process in here, I, I don't understand it. Let me read to you what the county charter says with respect to their, so I started looking at this, and it just seemed very strange to me. The administrative branch of Broward County is hereby created, the county administrator is authorized to action to the city, of the county commission to this chapter, blah, 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 take care of the welfare of the county's residents, administer the administrative branch, so forth. The county commission shall appoint the county manager by a vote of one more than that which would constitute a majority of the full city commission. So, you know, it's one more to appoint, but the county commission may dismiss the county manager by a majority of the full, of the county commission. And then it goes into qualifications, and in the, in the absence provision is also much clearer. County administrator may designate in writing or qualified county employee to exercise the powers and perform the duties of the county administrator during his or her temporary absence of disability. If the county commissioner fails to make that designation or cannot make that designation, the county commission shall designate by resolution. And under the language that, I mean, we're, we're not there yet, but under the language later on, it, it sort of places the commission in a conundrum, if the manager in, in the point of disability can't make that, and that's, that's the next question. And so, I, I'll just hold that comment till when we get there. But I would, I would like to see this very much simplified. I like the idea of four fifths to a point. I'm not wedded to that. However, I believe that if the city manager cannot keep the confidence of at least three of the five members here, how do we pass the budget? How do we pass ordinance? It's how do we do what we have to do? And it's, and it's, and it's that confidence that maintains the stability, not the vote. So, I, I tend to think that that is not going to be so much an issue. If we, we hire quality people and we empower them to do the job that they need to do, and if they're doing a great job, this clause will never even come up. But I, I just don't see all this due process where they can call witnesses on their behalf and issue subpoenas and all of this other kind of stuff, and, and post bonds and all this other, I just, this is, this is overly dense, and I don't know what period in Pembroke Pines' history it harkens back to, but it's just, it's obsolete. Folks, if the city commission ever should happen, and I hope it never happens, to ask the city manager for the keys, the last thing they're going to want, because they're going to want another job, is to hold a hearing. It's just, it's not practiced. It, it doesn't work that way. Nobody but I, a person who did that. So, I'm hopeful that we can simplify this whole thing and have that discussion when, when the time comes. Mr. Manager, the, Mr. Attorney, what's the next item?
Okay, Mayor, if you will. The next item occurs, and the numbering on my pages may be different than yours, I apologize, but it relates to Article Four, and under administration, under the reference of section 4.0 through the acting city manager, and this provision essentially provides a deletion of anything that refers to disability, interestingly different than the county charter you just read from. This provision deletes any reference to disability, so that, for example, it now would read, by letter file with the commission, the city manager shall designate a qualified city administrative officer to exercise their powers and perform the duties of city manager during their striking his or her temporary absence, and they strike the word, the words for disability, and then throughout that section, there's no reference to disability of any kind, just absence. They neutralized, or they made neutral any designation, whether it's disability or otherwise, they made it all defined as an absence.
So, so I'll start this one off. So, let's say that, heaven forbid, there, a city manager in Pembroke Pines should ever, I don't know, be, be in a catastrophic accident or something like that, be in a coma, and before that failed to appoint a, an acting. The way I read this language, it's, the city commission would be unable to, to do that. Is that correct?
Mayor respond, Mayor?
Yes.
You, you could be right, because if you look at the section, it says by letter file with the commission, that means you presume that a letter's unfilled before you had that accident.
So, so again, I, I think that, I think that by using some best practices, if, if the city manager's going to be away on vacation, or is on bereavement leave, or what have you, and appoint somebody as an acting and then, and then returns, that's one thing. The city manager is incapacitated or incapable of performing the job, then we have to appoint somebody, the same way that we appointed the city manager. So, I look forward to having that conversation on, on, on regular agenda, because I just, I don't see this as being workable. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, you speak very clearly with that point. I, I think that word disability should not be struck, but should be applied in the sense of if there's a disability, then the commission has the authority to make that appointment.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Commissioner Hernandez?
Commissioner Schwartz?
The charter, City Attorney didn't allude to it, but the charter allows us to appoint interim under, under, under circumstance of incapacitation. I think it, instead of going out and asking for the voters to clean this up, because again, there's no guarantee that you have an up or a down. We've had charter questions that the commission has put in front of the voters, and it's been a no, which creates a, a bigger challenge. So, I, I think it's just very, a simple ask is to have that letter on file as a part of the terms of employment of who would be, who would be appointed in the event of an incapacitation. That is a clear thing to do, and then it's, and it's such time that it resolves itself, we, you know, we have direction. Certainly, the commission is not prohibited, while it will look grotesquely terrible on TV, if you have a city manager who's incapacitated, that four fifths of the commission would terminate that city manager and then hire another one. I mean, that's certainly an option as well. So, we're not, we're not stuck with the possibility of having, or we're, we're unable to have our government function. We already have the tools. It may not look good on, on, on Local 10 news, but it's there. I don't see a need to put something like that out to the voters, since we already have the ability to do that now.
Okay. Anything further on this item? We have one other item, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I can, number four, which is essentially Article Four, referencing the Department of Finance, at Article 4.06, referenced as the Department of Finance, in subsection, let me see, A, B, B1. That language says qualification slash requirements. The director of finance shall have a four-year college degree with a major in accounting, and the charter board has struck the word "and" and insert the word "or," or finance. It would now read, with the change, shall have a four-year college degree with a major in accounting or finance, and two years' experience in municipal accounting, taxation, budgeting, and financial control. So, in this proposal from the charter board, under subsection 2B, if you will, the answer is they deleted the word "and" and made it "or." That's, and that is substantive, that does change the qualifications for the position.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, again, this comes back to the fact that this is a very, we are a very large organization. Our budget is, you know, over half a billion dollars. Again, experience is very important to me. Two years after college in a government agency, or in a municipal agency, is just not what I would expect. I would expect that we would look for somebody who has good experience, whether it's finance or accounting, I, I get that, I understand that very clearly. I think the years of experience should be five, and then the fact of municipal accounting, I don't know that it should be just municipal. Again, it's, it, to me, it's government, you know, maybe sometimes we need to look outside the box.
Governmental account.
Right. So, it should be, you know, be, have a familiarity or an experience in the governmental accounting, not necessarily just municipal, because it could be at a state level, it could be a federal level, it could be, you know, a, a district level that had, you know, multiple, you know, cities or counties within their jurisdiction, so.
Okay. Could I ask, so you mean, you would, what you're proposing, Vice Mayor, is removing just municipal or adding other type of governmental experiences, what you're saying? In addition to the five years, you're saying, not just municipal, it's?
It's governmental.
Governmental, okay.
Okay. Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yeah.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Oh, sorry. I was just going to say, I agree with the changing it to governmental.
Okay. Commissioner Schwartz?
The governmental would, would embrace the whole charter officer discussion, right? Just more of a broad view. For, for those who weren't here, Finance Director Lisa Chung was an in-house hire. We had a finance director who was a part of the city for a very long time, and it was, it was through my direction, supported by the commission, to have Ms. Chung reach certain thresholds in order in order to be hired. And so when I looked at this particular recommendation of the or, accounting has its place and finance has its place, but they're not necessarily the same thing when it comes to the actual function of the, of what our finance director is doing. I'm kind of hung up on the or. I think there is certainly an opportunity for us to, why say us, for a future commission, if they're looking to make a selection, to look at a resume. And if somebody has both a finance and accounting degrees, fine. If they have one or the other, okay. I don't think it's a disqualifying. I think if we pushed our city attorney to interpret the intent of the commission, I believe that would fall within the intent of the charter. I'm not trying to split hairs here. I'm really not. I just don't want to complicate the issue. I want to simplify things. Governmental accounting or governmental finance? Notice how they call it accounting, they don't call it finance, right? Governmental accounting, you know? Really here governmental finance. So there's a reason for that. So those are my comments, and I'm not quite certain how the ballot language can make 75 words or less to make that change, but, you know, our city attorney can be very creative.
Okay. I'm going to chime in on this. Well, I would not put this before the voters. I just, I think it works fine just the way it is. While I appreciate that and/or, I just, I don't think that that distinction is sufficient to put this before the voters. They will understandably have many questions about it, and it's just, it's working perfectly fine now. I don't believe that a city manager would recommend a finance director for our approval who didn't have the requisite background. I just don't see where this needs to go before the voters at all. So I think this is fine. Those are my thoughts on that. We will pick this up.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
There's one last item.
There's one more?
Yes. That begins at Article 7 Charter Review Board itself. It's Section 7.01. My number page is five. Yours may be the next page over. This change basically continues the reference to 11 members, except in the last two sentences of the proposal from the Charter Board. The mayor shall appoint three individuals, and each city commissioner shall appoint two individuals. And the addition offered by the Charter Board is from the city commissioners' respective district. Still 11 members, still every six years, beginning in May of 2016, et cetera. But the end result is that the Charter Board recommends adding language, which is substantive, to require that the commission appointees come from their district.
City manager, rather, city attorney, if I can begin this part of the discussion. And I think this also potentially applies to superintendent discussion that we've had. Just because the charter says something doesn't mean that we can't do an ordinance that further clarifies it. So, City Attorney, catch me if you think I go off base. Let's assume that the recommendation from the city commissioners' respective districts was not there. To my knowledge, nothing prohibits the city commission from passing an ordinance pursuant to Section 701 that clarifies that the appointees shall come from a commissioner's respective district. Do you disagree?
No, I concur with your opinion.
So this also doesn't have to go before the voters. And I urge the commission, as a matter of good public practice, not to place questions before the voters of the city that they don't need to answer. So similarly, with respect to superintendent, the responsibilities of the city manager are enumerated. But if we felt particularly strongly about elaborating further with respect to superintendents and what future superintendents might be, we can pass an ordinance pursuant to the charter that clarifies that. It doesn't have to go before the, but four fifths or three fifths? Yeah, that kind of answer, because that's just too substantive. So, I mean, if it says four fifths and you want to go to three fifths, that's a lower standard. I dare say that we might get away with an ordinance that went from three fifths to four fifths, but I don't know. That's not a question I'm going to ask, but it seems to me that's a more plausible question than going from four fifths in the charter to three fifths. So I think that what we should place before the voters should be limited to what we need them to decide. And if the more that we can do to keep items off the ballot, I think the better off the government is and the better off the residents are.
Well, on that point, Mr. Mayor, and perhaps I bring in another discussion, because, with your permission?
Yes, sir.
Not on this matter. And I don't know if it's appropriate to put it, to your point, to a vote, but I said this in our last workshop, we had it in that room over there in the city center, where I had a major issue, whether it goes in the charter or not, I don't know, but I had a major issue with the fact that the way it reads now, the commission decides when there's a vacancy whether they appoint an individual. I know all of us basically represent between 45,000 and 47,000 residents. I would have an issue with leaving it vague, because frankly, I don't think any district in this city, if there's a vacancy due to, we've had sadly elected officials pass away, we've had some resign. If there is a vacancy, there should be some kind of wording that says the commission has to appoint someone for the very fact that you need a representative in that district for a certain period. I mean, I was in court with Mr. Goran and his team and the city manager when we lost, and the supervisor of elections authority was upheld. So right now, as it reads, correct me if I'm wrong, city manager is in appointments for 180 days. The supervisor, a maximum of 180 or to the next election, the supervisor election has the discretion to determine when that next election, what will be granted ballot access of the city.
Okay, so under additional items, you, because that was actually the next section.
I cheated, I'm sorry.
No, 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 no. Mike wants to talk about elections. Okay, let me, is there anything further on the item that we had before? Okay. Is that it, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Now we get to new items, and I just want to hear the, if you have new items that you wish to discuss. We don't have to do all of this tonight. I mean, but, you know, I want to get it down in terms of what new items from the, with respect to the charter, you as commissioners want to discuss. Vice Mayor, did you have any additional items that you wanted to put in?
Mr. Mayor, I think you made a very valid point when you spoke about, you know, let's be very judicious about what items we are going to present before the voters. Don't need to add enough or too much where it becomes very confusing and things like that. I think we need to stay focused on what are the most important issues to our charter, and I don't have any further addition to that at this point.
I would only add one thing. Even though the Charter Board is called into being, what, once every 10 years, is it?
Six.
Six, once every six years. This commission reserves the right to place a ballot item before the voters anytime you wish. So, I mean, that authority rests in us. It doesn't like sunset every six years or that kind of thing. So, okay. Commissioner Rodriguez, did you have any additional items that you wanted to discuss in the charter?
No, just the election one.
Yeah.
Possibly including a conversation on qualifying periods.
Okay. Qualifying periods. Commissioner Schwartz, did you have any additional items to add?
Just to support what you were saying, Mayor, the commission always has the option of placing a ballot initiative, the charter amendment, in front of the voters. I championed the red light camera.
That wasn't a charter item?
It was a charter. It was August.
No, sir. City Attorney tells me that that was never a charter item.
What side of I may? I'm sorry.
Red light camera? Was that a charter item?
It was actually a referendum and not in the charter. It was voted on by the voters.
It didn't change the charter.
Got you. It was not codified in the charter, but it was not.
It was a straw ballot.
No, it was actually a ballot referendum question.
I misspelled referendum, okay. So with respect to, and I'm not sure how, we're in the workshop side of it. I don't know if you want to wait until later to have the discussion or whatever. If Commissioner Rodriguez or Commissioner Hernandez has ideas on how to cure potential defects, it would be great to have that information beforehand so we could digest it instead of getting hit with it on live TV. I just don't think that tonight is, later tonight is the time to have that discussion without having any advance notice, to be fair to all of us, because there may be some further follow-up. We had the Monday memo, we have the city attorney to speak to and that sort of thing. So, and certainly, if there is some desire to make a change like that, I think town halls are great. I think having the citizens weigh in would also be helpful. I know that as far as new items go, I want to thank the Charter Review Board. Unfortunately, we never had 100% attendance at any of the meetings for a various number of reasons, but I want to thank them for it. And I think there's an opportunity for us to send some things back to them for more review and let them discuss it. And they're certainly able and capable of providing some guidance. And so that's how I want to close my comments, Mayor. I think the item tonight should be tabled for any further direction with respect to new items. I think what we've digested, the housekeeping items we can dispense of, accepting the report can be done, but anything further than that, I think just requires a little bit more time.
Okay. That concludes our workshop on charter review. We have the item in the agenda where we will pick that up and begin to have further discussion. This, the Pembroke Pines City Commission meeting of September 4, 2024 is hereby called to order. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor, good.
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Here.
Mayor Castillo?
Here.
City Manager Dodge?
Here.
City Attorney Goran?
I'm here.
We have a call.
Would you all please stand for the pledge of allegiance, followed by Sofia Verdura? Is she here? Ah, Sofia, would you please come forward? And after Sofia leaves us in the pledge of allegiance, she will sing the national anthem. Please come forward. Whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The floor is yours.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rockets were gliding, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free? And the home of the brave?
Wow. Sofia, what school do you attend? What school do you attend? Pembroke Pines Charter Central is doing a great job, and thank you so very much. That was beautiful. And thank you, Mom, for lending her to us. Is that her sister? What's her name? Emma? Oh, wow, Emma, good to see you. You going to sing for us one day? No, all right. Fantastic. All right, presentations. I'm going to ask our outstanding property appraiser, Martin Care, who is here, to please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You can clap. He's the greatest guy in the world. And let me tell you, he comes to see us once a year to give us good news, and, Mr. Property Appraiser, the podium is yours. There's a button there that says speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
There you go.
Is it working? Excellent. Well, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. And I have to tell you, I think Mayor Castillo has a fantastic ring to it. Huge congratulations to you, to Maria, and to Jay. I think it was wonderful that you all worked so hard, and I think the people of Pembroke Pines are very lucky to have you all represent them. And before I just quickly talk about how our office can help the members that register Pembroke Pines, and also before I quickly talk about property values and something I'm really passionate about cracking on title fraud, I wanted to thank you. First, I love Pembroke Pines. You may not know this, but after I was born at Plantation General Hospital, my parents brought me home to their home in Pembroke Pines. I actually went to passing the Lake Salar Mentory a long, long time ago, and I have to tell you to see where Pembroke Pines has come since 1977 until today, which is a year of my life, is pretty incredible. But I also want to thank your staff. You know, you have some of the best staff in Broward County. I get to work with all 31 cities. I have to tell you, Charlie Dodge is really fantastic, and I think you probably have the best legal mind ever, and Sam Goran, I try to pick his brain for free legal advice all the time, which I'm glad it's free, because he would cost a lot of money hourly, but he's pretty awesome. But with that said, Mr. Mayor, just for the residents, there are a few main functions to our office. The first function is we determine the value of every piece of property in Broward County for tax purposes, whether it's residential, commercial, tangible personal property, or essentially assessed property, which are railroads. And the reason that's important is because when a resident of Pembroke Pines pays their property taxes, the amount of taxes they pay is a relationship between the value of the property that we set and the tax rate set by you all, the county commission, the school board, and all other taxing authorities. And so the most important thing we want to do is make sure we get it right. And as you know, Broward County is a huge place. More people live here than 13 states, the District of Columbia, and all US territories except Puerto Rico. It's big, and there are more parcels that we appraise and exist in many states. And even though the people in our office do a very good job and their assessments are very accurate, mistakes can occur, or maybe people have information about their property that we don't have, that help us bring down their assessed value, which could bring down the amount of property taxes they pay. And right now is a great time for me to come and talk, because last month, every single resident that owns property in Pembroke Pines got a letter from me in the mail. It was the truth and millage notice. It's not a tax bill. It was basically a document so people can make sure they don't overly pay in their property taxes, and it showed a few things. The first thing it showed was the value of the property for tax purposes. It showed all the tax savings exemptions they're currently getting. It showed the date and times that you all and every other taxing authority are going to be discussing their tax rates, and it showed the proposed amount of property taxes they're going to be asked to pay for this year. And I always tell everybody, you got that document, take a look at it, even go on our website at bcpa.net, click on your properties and look at the document again. And if you have any concern about the value of your property, just call me by September 18th, or if you're not getting every exemption out of the law you're entitled to, call me by September 18th, so we can make sure you only pay on your fair share of value and you get every tax saving exemption you're entitled to, so you can save money on your property taxes. The other thing I wanted to quickly talk about, Mr. Mayor, if it's okay, is where property values are right now in Pembroke Pines. And just like every real in Broward County, they've gone up again. Property values, once again, this year rose, and there are a lot of sales in Pembroke Pines to show that, and property values are more this year than they were last year and the year before that, and definitely before COVID. And to give you an idea, in 2023 last year, if I took all the commercial and residential property and I sold it on the open market, you would have got right about $29.9 billion. That's a big number. Fast forward just one year, there's been a 7.43% increase in market value to right about $30. Fast forward just one year, there's been a 7.43% increase in market value to right about $32.119 billion. It's a pretty big number. The taxable value is the value you're currently looking at that you're going to set your milage rate on to determine the amount of money that you need to provide great services to the people of Pembroke Pines. And in 2023, the taxable value was right about $17.428 billion. Fast forward one year, there's been an 8.39% increase in taxable value to right about $18.890 billion. And to put that in perspective, your operating milage rate is 5.6690. And if that's what's adopted again, you'll pull in another $8,289,400 more this year than last year that you can utilize to provide great services to the people of Pembroke Pines. And something that's very important to note is the vast majority of people that live in Pembroke Pines are homesteaded. And so they're not really the ones that are seeing the full brunt of that $8 million of extra revenue coming in. It's really being paid for by many new residents coming to Pembroke Pines, paying top dollar for property and a significant amount of new construction that was added to the tax roll. This year, there was about $114.7 million of new construction added to the tax roll in Pembroke Pines, the largest being a strip center, which is anchored by a Publix and a Burlington Coat Factory that was put on for about $27 million. There are 41,285 homesteaded properties here in Pembroke Pines. You have 4,010 low-income seniors who receive a good amount of money, a reduction in their taxes that live here. You have 400 long-term seniors that actually pay no property taxes to the residents of Pembroke Pines. And I just want to thank you for that because not every city has adopted a long-term senior exemption. To qualify, you have to be over 65 years of age. You had to made under last year, right about $36,614. You had to be in your home for 25 years or more, and the value of your home has to be under $250,000. If you qualify, you can you don't pay any property taxes to the city or the county. And what I love about this act is, you know, 400 property owners out of 41,000 property owners is a drop in the bucket. You don't even feel the loss of revenue when it comes to those 400 seniors. But to those seniors who struggle to make ends meet, they can put a lot more money in their pocket and have a better life because of the decision that you made. I hope that every other city in Broward County follows your lead because it's the right thing to do. Another thing that I love about Pembroke Pines is you actually have 471 American hero, totally permanently disabled veterans that pay no property taxes to Pembroke Pines. And there are 10 first responders that pay no property taxes because they're also 100% totally permanently disabled. The average, there have been 664 single-family home sales so far this year, pretty much on pace to what they were last year. The average sale price is about $689,584, which is about $45,000 more this year than last year. When it comes to condominium parcels, you have currently you have 17,234 condominium parcels. This year, there have been 430 sales. The average sale price is right about $240,780, which is about $8,000 more this year than last year. And something that's very important to note, even though the average sale price for a single-family home is about $689,000, the average taxable value is about $282,000. That's because when somebody moves to Pembroke Pines, they stay here for a long time because it's an awesome place to live. So they get the benefit of the Save Our Homes Assessment Cap that really keeps the taxable value low. The other thing, Mr. Mayor, I was just hoping to quickly talk about before I answered any questions is something that you know is just very near and dear to my heart and is cracking down on title fraud. Unfortunately, as you know, South Florida is the title fraud capital of the world. I talk about it everywhere I go. It's the capital of the world because you have criminals, and that's what they are. And what they do is they walk into the record and division of every county every single day in the state of Florida. They file fake deeds on people's properties, and they take those deeds and they extort people for money or mortgage rent or sell the property. They do it all the time. And so what we wanted to do about three years ago was give people in Broward County the opportunity to fight the fraud before the fraud occurs. So we came up with a fantastic program called Owner Alert. As you know, it's a free program to the public that is that basically notifies somebody there's been a title change in their property. And here's how anybody can sign up. If they go to our website at bcpa.net, they type in their name. They can also type in their email address, and they type in their parcel ID number. And if we have their email address in file, they're automatically verified. If not, they have to upload their Florida driver's license or Florida ID. If they don't have that, they have to upload a utility bill or something proving ownership. And then if any document, legitimate or not, is filed, changing ownership, they're notified instantaneously by email, by text message, they can get a hard copy in the mail. It's very, very important. We've had about 260,000 Broward County proprietors sign up so far. And so I'm very, very happy about because of your partnership and your wonderful staff allowing us to come here to Pembroke Pines all the time to meet with your residents. About 50% of all of your homesteaded proprietors have actually signed up for our Owner Alert program, which I think is a really great thing. And something that's very important to note is this year, the Florida legislature passed a fantastic bill. All Democrats, all Republicans voted for it, and the governor signed it. It actually exempts all information we collect, whether it's emails, phone numbers, even the fact that somebody signed up from our Owner Alert program. So that information can only be used for one purpose and one purpose only. That's notifying somebody there's been a title change to their property. And as you know, Mr. Mayor, when I started this program, I started getting phone calls from residents. And they would say, Marty, I just got an alert from your office. Somebody changed the title on my property, but I didn't do it. And then I got more and more and more. And I realized kind of how big of a deal this was for Broward County. So I came up with a different idea. I wanted to work with law enforcement, build criminal cases, and put the people in jail who are doing this. So I got the approval from the Department of Revenue, which approved my program. I then got the County Commission to fund it, and I call our Crimes Against Property team. I then went to see my friend Sheriff Tony, and I go, Sheriff Tony, I have a big problem. I have this great program called my Crimes Against Property Team, but I'm not law enforcement. You are. I can't issue probable cause affidavit search warrants. I can't arrest people. I cannot do the job of law enforcement. You can. Can we work together? And he said, absolutely. And he's actually assigned three sheriff detectives that work in our office so we can do the job of law enforcement. I then went to see Harold Pryor, our state attorney. And I go, Harold, you know, the sheriff and I, we're working together. We're going to build these criminal cases. And when we build them, and if you think they're prosecutorial, would you prosecute the people that are doing this? And he goes, absolutely, Marty. And we entered an agreement to work together. And he's assigned now an assistant state attorney that works with our office that prosecutes the people that we bring to them. And over the past two years now, we've been very successful. We've had hundreds of criminal investigations. We've had a significant amount of arrests and convictions. And what I was hoping to just quickly talk about, just for the residents, just give you some examples of what the people will do to try to defraud people of their property. And something I'm very proud about is last year I came and I spoke about three cases that were arrests, but there's evolved into convictions now. And I wanted to quickly start with those because I think they're pretty interesting, and the people that did the crimes are now doing the time. The first one I like to talk about involved a married couple, two wives. One of the wives worked in one of our hospital districts. The other wife worked in the real estate industry. The wife that worked in the hospital district would find out when people would pass on. She would then take their confidential information, including their social security numbers, and give it to a wife in the real estate industry who would find that they had property in Broward County and heirs here. If they had property and no heirs, they'd file fake deeds on the properties, they'd sell the properties on Zillow Mortgage, the properties, rent the properties. They profited the amount of millions of dollars, but now I'm very happy because they were found guilty, and they're spending their time in different prisons. And something I'm also very happy about is they were required to pay a significant amount of restitution to many victims, especially senior victims, all throughout Broward County. Another example happened from a person not from Broward County, from Miami-Dade County. He somehow found out that there was a senior. And he found that this senior was very sick and owned a five-acre parcel of vacant land in Southwest Ranch that was free and clear of a mortgage. He decided he wanted to steal it and take out a mortgage. And so what he did was he filed a fake corporation with Tallahassee. He made the officer and director of the corporation that sixth senior that owned the property. He then made a fake ID saying he was that senior. He then filed a fake deed saying the corporation owned the property. He then walked into a small business in the city of Sunrise. He said, you know what? I've fallen into some hard times, made some bad financial decisions. Can I please have a $500,000 mortgage? And unfortunately, the mortgage company gave it to him. Well, we investigated it. He was found guilty. Fortunately, right now, he's spending, he was sentenced to three years in federal prison. He's serving his time. Unfortunately, he was given the full mortgage. He spent about $80,000. We recovered the rest. Another conviction that we had happened about two months ago. And this one was one of our bigger cases. The ringleader would file quiet title actions in circuit court, basically lawsuits in circuit court, saying this senior or this bank or this person no longer wanted the property. The return of service would go to the guy's buddy who was in a mobile home in Hillsborough County. And he would say, oh, yeah, I represent that senior, that bank, that person. Yeah, they don't want the property anymore. Put in this guy's name or his company's name. They sold dozens of properties all throughout Broward County. Fortunately, the ringleader was found guilty. He was sentenced to eight years in prison, followed by 10 years probation. If he violates his probation, he's actually going to go to jail for life. And another very interesting one, there's a co-conspirator, minor co-conspirator, who was found guilty, was given five years probation, was also deported to her home country of Maldalva, a Eastern European country, and she's not allowed to return back to the United States. Another couple of examples, I just wanted to bring up that are recent arrests. And one actually involves Pembroke Pines. Because unfortunately, Pembroke Pines being such a big city, it's our second-largest city. It's a huge economic engine. And being a big city, you have a lot of vulnerable people that get preyed upon. And the these are just arrests. They have not yet been convictions. And the people that were arrested will have their day in court, and you're innocent until proven guilty. But here's the facts as we know it. The first one didn't involve Pembroke Pines. But I'd just like to quickly talk about this because the person that we arrested was a lawyer. She was arrested and charged with helping another person steal a property in Cooper City. And I wanted to bring that up because what I found is the people that do this are all over the board. They are lawyers. They're physicians assistants. They are people that never went to college. They're just pretty much everybody. So I like to bring that up, so I hope everybody's just very, very vigilant when it comes to their property. The second one does involve Pembroke Pines. And here's the facts as I know them. The two victims were American heroes, Walter and Vivian. Walter actually served in the U.S. Armed Forces for a very, very long time and was actually an 18-year member of the Broward Sheriff's Office. His wife, her name was Vivian. She's the other victim. And in the 1970s, right here in Pembroke Pines, they got married. And they bought a home that was not too far from here. About a year later, they got divorced. And then Walter bought a townhouse about a mile up the road in Pembroke Pines. But they continued to live together in the marital home. Over the next 20 years or so, they were happy as punch. They still lived together. They weren't married, but they were living in that home. And then in 2020, Vivian got very, very sick, and a caregiver came to the home. And then she passed on. And then for the next few years, Walter had kind of a tradition. Every single day, he would try to look at both homes. He would go to one home, he'd check the mail, make sure it's locked up and safe, and he'd go to the townhouse, just kind of back and forth. Until one day, the neighbors noticed he wasn't doing that anymore. So they called the Pembroke Pines Police Department, and the Pembroke Pines Police Department went out. And they did, as always, a very good job. They went inside the home, and they found Walter had passed on in the home. About a week later, the former caregiver, well, actually about a week later, the home was broken into. And then about five minutes after the home was broken into, the former caregiver allegedly showed up at the home. And she called the police, and the police came out, and they did exactly what they were supposed to do. They saw there was a burglary, and they they did what they were supposed to do. And of course, like anything else, they had to leave, and they did. And about a week later, the former caregiver allegedly filed two deeds on both properties, one on the townhouse and also on the marital home. She then allegedly tried to sell both the properties. And what I think is also kind of amazing, she also has been charged with trying to opening up a probate estate because she somehow found out that Walter had about $1 million in the bank. And so she was arrested, and the notary was arrested, and they've been charged with a significant amount of crimes. I wanted to bring those stories up, and I can bring up many, many more. Because unfortunately, the people that do this do this all the time. It happens every single day. Every day, we get cases all throughout Broward County about people being targeted for people trying to steal their properties. So I hope anybody in Pembroke Pines that hasn't signed up for our Owner Alert program, please do so. It's a free program. And I think it's really there to protect your most important asset, your home. And the other reason I like to talk about this, I like to scream out this stuff from the rooftops because I want everybody out there to know that if they want to do this in Broward County, we're going to work very hard to put them in jail for a long time. And before I end, Mr. Mayor, I do want to give a big shout out to your police. Pembroke Pines has a fantastic police force. And aside from the fact that we, of course, have our three sheriff detectives, we work with all the different cities when it comes to cracking down on deed fraud. And your chief and Pembroke Pines are just so easy to work with, and they do a really fantastic job. With that said, I can go on and on forever. I just appreciate very much you having me. And I just thank you for giving me the opportunity to say a few words.
Thank you, Property Appraiser Martin Care. What a great job you're doing and have been doing. And we always look forward to seeing you. Please come and see us again. Ladies and gentlemen, Property Appraiser Martin Care.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, everybody.
Chief Vargas, you're next.
Good evening. Ron? Yes. Thankfully, I don't believe the property appraiser drive as fast as he speaks because we do have a lot of officers here today. So I am Police Chief Jose J. Vargas. It's a great honor to be here tonight. This is a very good day for a police chief because I get to introduce to our community one of our very own and promote him to a leadership position. As always, as a police department, we're very proud and we're thankful for our wonderful residents, our supportive city elected and staff. And I am personally very thankful as well for our professional, innovative, noble, engaging, and service-oriented workforce, sworn civilian and volunteers. This greatest of cities really is in the greatest of hands. I'm very proud to introduce one of those pairs of hands to you tonight. So with that said, Officer Witt, please come forward with your family. Officer George Witt joined the Pembroke Pines Police Department as a code compliance officer in February of 2014 and was sworn in as a police officer in December of 2015. With him today is his partner, Lisa. During his career, he has served in the following positions: patrol officer, field force, drive team, bicycle patrol team, and as an auxiliary officer for the Emergency Operations Center. Officer Witt has completed several college credit hours and specialized training courses. During his career, he has received numerous department awards and letters of appreciation from the community. It is with great confidence that I present Officer George Witt to the city administration and city commission, to our Pembroke Pines Police Department, and to the residents of the city of Pembroke Pines as he enters this leadership role in the rank of sergeant. Mayor Castillo, will you please administer the oath of office?
You please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, George Witt, do solemnly swear and affirm that I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and government of the United States and of the state of Florida and the charter and ordinances of the city of Pembroke Pines. And I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the state. And that I will well and faithfully perform all the duties of sergeant in the Pembroke Pines Police Department, which I am now about to enter to help me God. Congratulations, Sergeant. The podium. Thank you, Chief Vargas. Good evening, everyone. I'm honored and humbled to be here tonight. I would like to thank Chief Vargas, Assistant Chief Bermudez, Assistant Chief Barnes, Assistant Chief Serino, Major Mayor Castillo, City Manager Dodge, the commission members, and all the members of the command staff that are here for the trust that they have bestowed upon me as I embark on this journey as the new sergeant. Lisa, my significantly better half is here with me tonight, and I will be eternally grateful for all of her love, encouragement, and unflagging support. Thank you, Lisa. I would like to extend special thanks to several individuals who've had a great impact on my career with the Pembroke Pines Police Department, always presenting themselves as exceptional role models and positive influences. Captain Goldish, Assistant Chief Barnes, Sergeant Hanson, Sergeant Dalton, Sergeant Pedrone, Sergeant Walter, Sergeant Tender, and most recently, Sergeant Helms, Sergeant Cuba, and Sergeant Jacobs for guiding me through the ins and outs of this exciting and challenging new position. My great appreciation go out to all of my patrol teammates that I've worked with for the for years on the overnight shift as well as the many talented officers and coworkers that I've had the pleasure of working with during my tenure here. I want to express my gratitude to the Lakoskis who are in attendance this evening as well as my good friends Ted and Debbie Lanay, Scott and Jackie Martini, Debbie Fero, Denise and Emily Raska. Very lucky to call them my friends. I will, to the best of my ability, uphold the standards, values, and principles of the Pembroke Pines Police Department during the performance of my duties as a sergeant. And again, I would like to thank the city of Pembroke Pines and the Pembroke Pines Police Department for this opportunity that has been afforded to me and the trust that has been bestowed upon me. But I shall always be thankful.
Okay, congratulations, Sergeant. Commissioner Rodriguez, if you would join me, please. This is a proclamation of the city of Pembroke Pines Hunger Action Month.
Whereas since 1981, Feeding South Florida has worked to end the hunger in the city of Pembroke Pines by providing our community in need with immediate access to nutritious food, and whereas hunger does not discriminate, it knows no race, religion, or age. In South Florida, approximately 1 million individuals face hunger. Food should not be an impossible choice for the community of Pembroke Pines. And whereas Feeding South Florida leads hunger and poverty advocacy efforts in our community while transforming lives throughout the innovative programming and education that provides economic growth and overall well-being.
Now therefore, I, Angelo Castillo, Mayor of the city of Pembroke Pines, the city that cares, can, and does, along with the city commission, do hereby proclaim September 2024 as Hunger Action Month in the city of Pembroke Pines, and urge the good people of the city of Pembroke Pines to join us in supporting Feeding South Florida during this month of action. Congratulations.
Thank you all. Hunger Action Month is very important. Feeding South Florida is a national campaign as we continue to serve all the residents and folks in not only Broward County but Palm Beach, Miami Dade, and Monroe Counties. As mentioned here, we're currently looking at about 1.2 million folks that are experiencing food insecurity. I remember being part of our distributions here back in 2020 in the city of Pembroke Pines and how great the need was then. Unfortunately, it has continued to grow, and we appreciate your support in proclaiming, you know, Hunger Action Month for Feeding South Florida. So thank you.
Let me just say that I will never forget, none of us will ever forget, how hard you all worked and how generous you all were during that time of COVID. There were a lot of people with hunger insecurity in the city, and your organization was nothing short of spectacular. Well, but you stood out, and for that, we will be eternally grateful. Thank you very, very much, and enjoy your month. Commissioner Schwartz, will you join me, please? This is the proclamation of the city of Pembroke Pines Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. Whereas the month of September is nationally recognized as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and the Pembroke Pines City Commission is firmly committed to raising awareness about suicide prevention, which cost the lives of 50,000 Americans last year. And whereas the American Academy of Pediatrics, the Children's Hospital Association, the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry has declared a national emergency in child mental health, and whereas it's critical to recognize the signs of depression that may lead to thoughts of suicide, including speaking about wanting to die, feelings of isolation or hopelessness, increased use of drugs or alcohol, and severe mood swings, firearms are the leading cause of death by suicide, and access to a gun triples the risk of death. And whereas it's critical to recognize the best methods to prevent suicide when the person is in crisis, ask if the person is thinking of taking their lives. Keep them safe and remove their access to lethal means such as poisons, prescription drugs, and firearms. Get them professional help. In Florida, dial 988, or call National Suicide Prevention Lifeline, 1-800-273-8255, or text 741-741. Now therefore, I, Angelo Castillo, Mayor of the city of Pembroke Pines, along with the city commission, do hereby proclaim September 2024 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the city of Pembroke Pines, and supports the mission of lock it up, and the League of Women Voters in Broward County Gun Safety Committee, as well as the Florida Chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics, by encouraging safe storage of firearms and removal of other lethal means to prevent suicide. Monica, congratulations. Thank you very, very much for everything you do.
Thank you. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Broward County and the Florida Chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics, I'd like to thank the commission for recognizing Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. Over 50,000 Americans die of suicide each year, half of those from firearms. Locking up guns does save lives. The new phone number to call for mental health crisis is 988. Anyone, and I mean anyone, who wants a free gun lock mailed to their home, all you have to do is email Gloria.Lewis, L-E-W-I-S, at V-A.Gob. They are absolutely free. Thank you.
Thank you so very much for everything that you do. Mr. Stam?
Mayor, I'm proud to announce our District Four Natalie Valmonte Great Yard Award winner, Commissioner Hernandez.
Commissioner Hernandez, will you join us, please?
So our winner this month is, for the month of August, is Ms. Valerie Kevorkian. Ma'am, would you like to come up? Ms. Kevorkian is homeowner in the Chapel Trail community, and she has just a lovely home. Let's take a look at it here up on the screen. It's just, it's incredible. And we were really excited to announce her as the winner, and I think she was equally as excited.
Commissioner Hernandez? I'm biased, but Chapel Trail's the best. You're my neighbor. Thank you for taking so much pride in your home, for entering into the competition, and I hope your neighbors also enter at some point, but that's the kind of home that we should all want in Chapel Trail. It is absolutely beautiful. I'm not going to admit to stealing your ideas in my own yard, but thank you so much for taking pride in your home and your community, because by making your home as beautiful as it is, hopefully you inspire all of your neighbors in that district and throughout the city. And Mike, thanks so much for doing this.
So Mayor, as normal, we have a certificate for Ms. Kevorkian, as well as a Home Depot gift card, so she can continue her progress and get, there you go, new gloves.
Before I ask you to say a few words about your yard, what's your secret? Every single day?
But it's not really work. It's my enjoyment. It's my pleasure. I love to be outside. I've actually been gardening for a long time. I started out as a teenager. My mom wouldn't let me do anything, so I grew carrots and English peas. Ever since then, I kept going and going. I didn't really know this was an award. I didn't know it was for real. When I got the call, I was like, shut up. This is prank call. I didn't really believe it, but thank you very much. I can't believe I won. This is amazing. Thank you. I'm glad you got me before they go on as I have any, does anybody have an idea how to get rid of them?
Thank you very much. Okay. So Mayor, just as a reminder.
Thank you.
Mayor, just as a reminder, we do this program with our Code Compliance Division. They're out there helping us find great yards throughout the community, and next month, we'll be back with District One's winner to carry on this tradition.
Fantastic. Okay. Anything else?
No, just please, if you see somebody who has a great yard, please nominate the great yards. We love to have recommendations from our residents.
All righty. Good. All right. First and foremost, I want to wish the Vice Mayor, Tom Good, and his wife Patty, a happy birthday. Now, they were born not on the same day, but I think the same week. Same week, different year. They went to different high schools together. And happy, happy birthday. And also to Commissioner Michael Hernandez on your birthday. And I won't tell you how old he is, but he told me, and I said, I have a pair of shoes that old, but that's there. And he's doing a great job. I also want to ask all of you for a moment of silence for the two students and two teachers shooting victims in Appalachia High School in Georgia. This is just, it just continues to happen, and it breaks my heart every time I see it on TV, and I know all of you feel the same way. Moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Commissioner Schwartz, you had an announcement?
Yes, Mayor. Appointed personal privilege. Thank you. Twenty-five years and five hours ago, I married the best woman in the world. And I want to, I just want to say to Stacy, thank you for doing everything you have for our family and allowing me to serve. We've spent half of our marriage in public life, and I know it's not easy. Though tonight, it's appropriate that I'm here working, but we're going to continue this journey together because there's just unlimited pots built. I love you.
Wonderful. Happy, happy anniversary to you. Okay. I have three individuals signed to speak. However, first, we're going to do announcements of items to be pulled from the agenda. Any?
None, Mayor.
Commission order to report?
None, Mayor.
Appeals to the Board of Adjustment Decisions?
None, Mayor.
Announcement of board committee appointments. Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So tonight, I have distinct pleasure and honor to introduce to you all Aaron Lee, and have him as my appointee to the Board of the Pembroke Pines Economic Development Board. You can see that from his application, Mr. Lee has essentially lived in Pembroke Pines all of his life. And if you look at his resume, you will see that he's got a great education, he's got great work experience, and he has done a number of great things within the private arena. And I can tell you that when, you know, he had asked if he could participate in a board on the city, I couldn't stop jumping for joy. I got to tell you, I have known Aaron for quite some time. You know, he's a good, loving son to both his mother, Shauna, Ms. Shauna, and to his grandmother, Ms. Betty, and to his sister. His family is very involved in the city of Pembroke Pines, and so he's participating as well. He has enthusiastic energy. He is very thoughtful and intelligent. And folks, I got to tell you, you are looking at the next generation, future leader of Pembroke Pines, and I couldn't be more prouder than to appoint you to a very important board so that you can start making your contribution and setting your mark in the city of Pembroke Pines. So Mr. Aaron Lee, thank you for accepting this appointment.
Wow. Thank you, guys. First and foremost, I want to thank you all for having me on the agenda tonight. I truly look forward to this opportunity. A little brief history about me. As Vice Mayor Tom Good said, I grew up in Pembroke Pines. I was actually a charter starter, so, you know, this community means a lot to me. A little brief background, right after graduating from high school, I ended up going to Bethune-Cook University.
Where?
Bethune-Cook University, which is an HBCU on the beach. And while I was there, I ended up becoming a business administration major. Right after that, I actually ended up working for Anheuser-Busch and moved back down here. So while I was working for Anheuser-Busch, I ended up working with a lot of local mom-and-pop businesses and big store businesses as well. So when I saw this opportunity, I felt like this is definitely a great position for me to have and for me to be able to do my service in this community. So that's definitely intrigued me on this position. I truly look forward to, you know, finding solutions to help pretty much these businesses to grow, learning more about the economy, and just continuing to allow Pembroke Pines to be a great city to be in. So I want to personally give a special thanks to Vice Mayor Tom Good, and I look forward to this opportunity. Thank you.
Wonderful.
Yeah. Thank you.
Good luck. Well done. Public speakers, Stephen Fritz Henley. Stephen Fritz Henley. Oh, yes. Take your time. Huh? Is both of you? Okay. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Antoinette Tribute Butler. My address is 120300 Southwest 16th Street, Pembroke Pines, of course.
You have three moments.
Okay. The reason why we both really are coming today, so we're going to kind of tag team a little bit, is some issues that we're having with the association at Pembroke Pines at the landings. We live in the Genesis neighborhood and living in a Genesis neighborhood.
I'm sorry, you're going to have to speak into the microphone so that we can hear you.
Okay, sorry. So we both live in the Genesis neighborhood, Genesis at the Landing, which is located approximately off of Pembroke Road and just west of Farm Avenue. So we're having an issue with the association. We go to the association meetings like clockwork, at least for at least a year, I'll be honest. We join going to the association meetings for the simple fact that things were happening that we didn't agree with. So, and not agreeing with certain issues like parking, or them stopping us from parking on the sidewalk. I agree that parking on the sidewalks is clear, it's nice, but to tow my car in the middle of the night, to boot my vehicle in the middle of the night, come out, you don't have a vehicle sitting there, it's just not fair as a citizen of the city of Pembroke Pines. I understand that the city has no jurisdiction over what happens in the HOA, but they're going outside of that now. So I was cited because the issue with the parking. You have, I put down pavers. It's a do-it-yourself job on a, you know, over a weekend, and just go get some pavers from Home Depot. I laid the pavers out, and someone complained, which that's the prerogative, and stated that I was working without a permit. It's not a permit type of situation, just like if any of us went to Home Depot, got some pavers, laid it next to our driveway, and we just want to be able to park in our yard, one of just a little sleeve or on both, you know, both sides, and not be picketed or towed. So we're kind of live in a situation where I received the main complaint. Then my neighbor, Mr. Fitz Henley. So we're kind of live in a situation where we, I received the main complaint. Then my neighbor, Mr. Fitz Henley, the code enforcement officer, when he went out, he basically cited him as well because he also did the same thing, because we don't want to be booted, we don't want to be towed. I asked, what are we supposed to do? I've been living in the Landings for about 22 years, almost coming this December, no problem. I abide by all the rules, I do everything I'm supposed to do, but to come outside and have your vehicle towed is not a good thing, it's not a good feeling. So right now, my hands are tied, because now they went outside of the HOA. They went to the city. They contacted code with a fictitious name. And I was cited, and then with me being cited, my neighbor got cited. Then my neighbor across the street from, a, a, a street from us got cited. It's just not fair. So I just asked the question, what are we supposed to do? We can't park on the street, which is fine, so we abide by the rules. So why can't I put some do-it-yourself paver on the side of my driveway so I can get away with parking on that is in my yard? And it's not a
If I can't, if I can, I'm gonna ask you, Mr. Dodge, if this is okay, to get together with Assistant City Manager Mike Stam, who really understands these issues and can provide you with some guidance. And if he needs to connect you to the, to the Police Department in some way, he'll be able to do that as well. And I want to thank you for coming forward. I know that this is a, a, a big concern for you. And because you care about it, we care about it. So Mr. Stam is right in the back, and he can, he can give you his business card. And I'd like you two to be in contact, okay?
Okay, thank you so much.
Was that the same issue for you, sir?
Slightly different.
Yes.
Okay. You have three minutes. Your name and your address for the record, please.
Stephen Fitz Henley.
Right ahead.
10286 Southwest 16th Street, Pembroke Pines, Florida.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So again, we also understand that the Commission may not have jurisdiction over HOA. But again, looking for guidance. As she mentioned before, we're both residents of Pembroke, of Genesis Landing. Twenty-five years living there, 21 years for Ms. Butler. Because of the parking, which they were starting booting and towing cars, we decided we wanted to be able to discuss alternative options rather than booting cars and putting enormous amount of expenses to the, to the neighbors. We decided we wanted to run through the Board. So we started campaigning, and we received proxies. We spoke to Master Association, got an extension, and we handed in the court to their deadline. Because there was going to be a voting at the next meeting, so we had the proxies in on time. But then suddenly, the president of that association said that they're not going to consider the proxies because they needed to validate it. So we said, okay. So the next meeting, they validated it. But they said that, no, that it has been, the time has passed. So they're not going to consider it. They also then canceled the voting. So it's supposed to be an annual voting, so at least once a year, there's, there's voting for the Board members. And they consistently thwarted any attempts to have any type of voting so that we could be on the Board or anyone else to be on the Board. So we just wanted some direction as far as what should we do at that point.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, so what I'd like to do is, as the Mayor has done, is invite you to speak with Mr. Stam, and I will be in contact with Mr. Stam so that I can get in contact with you all and we can have some more productive conversation about what you're experiencing and what is most appropriate. So I too, Mike, if you would also please address this particular concern, and I'll reach out to you tomorrow.
Thank you both, very, very much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Robert Graves? Your name and address and affiliation for the record, please.
My name is Robert Graves. I live at 1515 East Broward Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale, Florida.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for having me tonight. I, I'm just gonna introduce my organization briefly. For those of you that don't know, the Boy Scouts of America is a community-serving organization composed of thousands of families who learn to support and participate in their local cities. There's thousands of families just in Broward County. Volunteer leaders in each local group inspire these families to provide tens of thousands of hours of community service. Scouting is where our youth learn to be good citizens. Historically, our elementary groups across Broward County have met in Broward County School. And this year, they received a $20,000 invoice for each group that's meeting in a Broward County school. So that's obviously just not something that's attainable for most of our families. Certainly not for our two groups that meet in Pembroke Pines. So I'm here tonight just to appeal to the powers that be in the room. If there's anyone that knows about a meeting space, I really want these families to access the program. I want us to do the good work of teaching kids how to be citizens in our city and in our county. We've partnered, we need new partners in Broward County. We have school access in Monroe, we have school access in Miami-Dade, we have school access in Palm Beach County, it's Broward only that's, that's done this. So if there's any way or any, or anyone that has knowledge, we just need some help. We have had success with partnering with the city of Weston, Sunrise, Wilton Manor, Coral Springs, and Coconut Creek to find free and available meeting space. And so we'd like you to be our next partner.
Did I hear you say that the school board of Broward County wants to charge you $20,000?
They want to charge the families that participate in their schools. They're, they want to charge the families that are, these schools $20,000, not us, right? So that's, and that's each group. So your two groups here in Pembroke Pines, that would be a total of $40,000. Yes, sir.
I'd like you to have a chat, Mr. Dodge, if it's okay, with Assistant City Manager Christina Storensen, who's right in the back. And we'll take it from there. And I want to thank you very, I want to thank you very much for coming forward.
Absolutely. Appreciate the help.
Thank you all. Okay. Consent agenda today consists of items one through seven, is it? No. Items one through 13? Nope. One, items one through 10. Items one through 10. What's your pleasure? Any polls? Seeing none, can I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Rodriguez. Is there a second? Second. Second by Commissioner Hernandez. Any discussion? Any from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. City Attorney, first reading ordinances.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commission. Item number 11, I'm gonna read the item into the record, and I'm told that because of an advertising irregularity, I will read the title, but the matter will be, will be pulled by
Second reading ordinance.
Correct. Will be pulled and will be note, re-noted as required by state law for the meeting on September the 18th. But I need to read it to the record just in case folks showed up to appear either for or against it with their permission, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Item 11, the motion to adopt proposed ordinance number 2024-08 on second and final reading, subject to the comments made earlier, is an ordinance of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending Chapter 155 of the city's land development code by amending Section 155.401 entitled zoning map to amend the city's zoning district map to rezone an approximately nine-acre parcel, nine-acre parcel of land generally located north of Pembroke Road and east of Douglas Road. It's more particularly described in Exhibit A from a C1, that's commercial, with restrictive covenants to C1 with updated restrictive covenants as set forth and incorporated herein as Exhibit B, providing for codification, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Mayor and Commission, absent a motion from the Mayor and Commission, the answer is, if you will, is a motion to continue this hearing to the specific date of the 18th of September for the purposes of correcting any advertising inconsistencies so that there can be a second, second reading at that meeting of the 18th. Motion to transfer to the 18th, Mr. Mayor, if you will.
Do I have a motion to transfer the meeting consistent with the attorney's suggestion? Moved by the Vice Mayor. Is there a second? Second. Second by Commissioner Hernandez. Any discussion? Any from the public? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item 12.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is item number 12. It's a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number 2024-09 on second and final reading. It is an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, repealing ordinance number 2010, thereby dissolving the Pembroke Shores Property Owners Association Neighborhood Improvement District, directing the city clerk to record a copy of this dissolution in the public records and to provide a copy to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity or its successor, the Florida Department of Commerce, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and finally, providing for an effective date in a public hearing. Thank you, Mayor. Number 12 on the floor.
There's a, there's a motion by Commissioner Hernandez, seconded by the Vice Mayor. I think this is in your district, huh?
Yeah.
Okay. There's a motion by Commissioner Hernandez, seconded by the Vice Mayor. Is there any further discussion on this one?
Mayor, I just actually want to congratulate you because I know that this was, when you were Commissioner, Commissioner for District Four, this was something you championed, and you worked very closely with the homeowners association for that community. They're still thankful today because they still tell me about it. So congratulations to you.
I, I, it was, it was one of the best pieces of work that we ever did. And not made easier by the fact that it happened during a mayoral election. However, it, it, it got done, and my biggest regret is that we don't have this tool anymore. The legislature has repealed it, and we could, we could have used it elsewhere. And gosh, what a, what a, what a great experience this was. Mike Stam, city attorney, the city manager, everyone came together to help these folks deal with a nearly impossible problem to solve. But we refused to say, to allow us to take no for an answer, and we got it done. And it was just, it was magic. One of those few moments where, where, you know, all the stuff you put up within government adds up in the end, and it's a great story. And, and we're about to close that chapter. So thank you very much. Any further discussion on this item? Any from the public? Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Castillo?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you very, very much. The record, Mayor and Commission, the permanent number is 2024 for the, for the permanent public records.
Okay. Item number 13.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Number 13 is a motion to pass proposed ordinance number 2024-10 on second and final reading. It is proposed ordinance number 2024-10. It's an ordinance of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending Chapter 32 of the city's Code of Ordinances entitled Departments, Boards, and Commissions, specifically creating Section 32-146 entitled Citizen Budget Advisory Board, providing for composition, providing for objectives, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, finally, providing for an effective date in a public hearing. Item 13 on the floor for consideration.
So move.
Thank you, Mayor.
Moved by the Vice Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rodriguez. I just want to say that the time for this is long overdue. And I'm glad that we're creating a citizens' budget advisory board. This was something that the residents of Pembroke Pines felt very, very strongly about. And it's about to become a reality, and I can't wait for these positions to be advertised and for the Board to start meeting. When we let the sun shine in, people realize how truly special a city and how well-run it is and how amazingly well their public dollars are guarded. And that has to be shown, because we live in a cynical world where there are assumptions made about, about government and how we do business that very clearly do not apply to this city. And so I want to be very, very upfront about making sure that everyone knows where every nickel is and making sure that, that by having residents directly involved in the review of our financial information, greater public trust will come. And the fact that we're inviting this committee to be formed is in itself a, an act of good faith. Any discussion on the Board regarding this item? Seeing none. Any from the public? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Castillo?
Yes, and by your vote, this is passed.
For the record, Mayor and Commission, the permanent number is 2025 for the permanent public records.
Madam Clerk, I'm very, very eager to see these positions posted as quickly as possible, and I appreciate your
Yes, just, just for, we, we certainly want to get a quorum and coordination with our finance director. When, when do you believe there should be, we should advertise the opening like tomorrow? But when, when do you, when do you feel, should, should we shoot for first quarter?
I would say, I would say
As far as, as far as for us, by the end of the year, we need to have our work, our, our appointees done. That, that will give us all of October, all of November. We only have one meeting in December, so I, I'm not really counting December, but
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think, I think it's, it's most relevant after a quarter to begin after a quarter.
Right.
So if, if, if their first meeting was in January, that would be, that would
It'd be timely, right? So if, if we could just make a commitment to ourselves to get, get your appointments completed, let's say by Thanksgiving, that would give enough time for the, for staff to prep and, and all that good stuff.
Works for me. Okay. The next item is
14.
14.
May I read it, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Thank you. Number 14 is 2024-11, which is a motion to pass on first reading. Ordinance number 2024-11 is an ordinance of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending the city's Code of Ordinances related to the city pension fund and firefighters and police officers by specifically amending Section 34.56 subsection N of the city's Code of Ordinances entitled Board Established Powers and Duties to amend the investment powers and authority of the Board of Trustees of the Pension Fund, providing for codification, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. Item number 14 on the floor, as previously amended by the directions of the commission at the last commission meeting. Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Number 14.
Who wants to move that? Moved by the Vice Mayor, second. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Rodriguez. Any further discussion on this item? All the documents are in order. We had a good thorough discussion of it last time. Any from the public? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much for your attendance and for your support.
The record, Mayor and Commission, the second and final reading of the ordinance is scheduled for September the 18th in these very chambers within the range of the meeting at 6:00 or 6:30.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Resolutions.
15 for the record. It's a motion to approve proposed resolution number 2024-R25, which is a resolution of the city commission of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, approving the fiscal year 2023-2024 agreement with Broward County, providing for dispersment of home program funds for the home buyer slash purchase assistance program, authorizing the appropriate city officials to execute the agreement for the designation of subrecipient and dispersment home program fiscal year 2023-2024 with Broward County in the amount of $330,914 flat and associated documents thereby, if necessary, providing for conflicts, severability, providing for effective date, and a public hearing item. Should there be members of the public that cannot attend the year, item number 15. Thank you, Mayor. On the floor.
Commissioner Go move. Moved by the Vice Mayor. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Rodriguez. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So I noticed that this item and item number 16 are essentially the same, but they're just for different years. And this is for 20, the year that we're about to end. And 16 is for the year that we're about to enter. So can I get just a little explanation on why these two items are like together? And what, have we already committed funds for people? I think it's like, what, up to a certain amount of dollars to buy a home?
Mr. Stam? Mike Stam is the city manager, Vice Mayor. This program is administered to the county and with the county. We really just got the documents recently, which is somewhat normal for this program. We've already been using the funds in this program to try to help people with down payment assistance. We utilize the home program for that. It doesn't take away or add any funds, they finally got the agreement to us. And I say that begrudgingly, but
Well, meaning that, well, I mean, I'm just saying that they probably having, does that mean that they have already given us the, the funds?
Well, they don't
We haven't executed the document.
Well, no, so they, they just, they administer these funds. Well, no, so they, they just, they administer these funds for us. They administer these funds for us. They, so they've already been putting people through the program or administering these funds. This was last year's agreement and now we're in this year's agreement, but they've already started to work through the program, the people that qualify.
And we send the people to them? Is that what this is?
Correct.
How do we screen them out again?
We'll do a little bit of pre-screening through CRA or vendor, but then we have home, process them through home and the county.
So we really don't touch much?
We don't touch much on this side.
All right.
We used to use that program for CDBG or for minor home repair. We use ship and CDBG for that. We use home for the down payment.
It's an easier tool.
Say again, sir?
It's an easier tool to use for that.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on this? Any from the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
For the record, Mayor Commission, the permit number is thirty-eight seventy-eight for number fifteen. Number sixteen. Thank you, Mayor. Number sixteen is a motion to approve the proposed resolution number twenty twenty-four R dash thirty, which is also a resolution of the city commission of the City Pembroke Pines, Florida approving the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five agreement with Broward County, providing for the dispersment of home program funds for home buyers slash purchase assistance program, authorizing the appropriate city officials to execute the agreement for the designation of subrecipient and dispersment home program fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five with Broward County in the amount of three hundred and thirty-nine thousand four seventy-eight flat and associated documents if necessary, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for an effective date and a public hearing this evening. Mayor, to the extent that any member of the public has come out to be heard on item number sixteen. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner, what's your?
No move.
Moved by the Vice Mayor. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Rodriguez. Any discussion? Seeing none. Any from the public? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
For the record, Mr. Mayor, Commission, the permit number is thirty-eight seventy-nine.
Thank you. Number seventeen?
Thank you, Mayor. Number seventeen for the record is as follows. A resolution of the City Pembroke Pines, Florida, item number twenty twenty-four R thirty-one, which is a resolution concerning efforts by Broward, by the Broward Metropolitan Planning Organization and the Florida Department of Transportation to design and to develop an traffic and traffic mitigation project at the intersection of Pines Boulevard and Flamingo Road, expressing the commission's disapproval of the proposed center turn overpass, supporting the continuation of a project development and environmental, environment study to evaluate viable ground level project options. That's PDNE, urging the Florida Department of Transportation and the Broward Metropolitan Planning Organization to preserve funds presently allocated toward continued studies and, and project implementation, providing for transmittal, providing for conflict, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. Item seventeen on the floor for consideration.
Commissioner, what's your pleasure?
No move, Mr. Mayor.
Moved by the Vice Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hernandez. Any discussion? Any from the public? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. It passes unanimously.
The record, Mayor Commission, the permit number for seventeen to be distributed as directed by the resolutions, number thirty-eight eighty.
No overpass.
No overpass.
Item eighteen.
Thank you, Mayor Commission. Number eighteen for the record is a motion to adopt proposed resolution number twenty twenty-four R thirty-two, which is a resolution of the city commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, supporting the Metropolitan Planning Organization's final twenty-fifty Metropolitan Transportation Plan. Public hearing, for those who cannot to be heard this evening, item number eighteen, Mayor. Thank you.
No move, Mr. Mayor.
Moved by the Vice Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hernandez. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I just have a, a brief question.
Yes, sir.
So I, I recognize, you know, these, these forms. The, the only thing that, I, I just have a question on, this goes out to twenty fifty, at this point, and we have three items that are in Pembroke Pines.
Okay.
That are listed under exhibit A, and I just don't know what years are the improvements to begin because these documents that are given us do not show what year the program, their program, the dollars program.
Do you want to come forward? He's got a tag that says MPO, otherwise I wouldn't. He didn't, he didn't just stay at a Holiday Inn suite, you know?
Well, I gotta, I gotta look for that a little bit here.
Go right ahead.
My name is Christopher Restrepo. I'm the project manager for Route to Twenty-Fifty, also known as our Twenty-Fifty Metropolitan Transportation Plan. And your question is mostly simple, but you can easily overlook it. So thank you for asking it. If you look at the sheet, that's part of your package, you'll see at the top of the form some years that are up there. And in there, we have the different time bands for the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. So the first one is the year twenty twenty-five, followed by our transportation improvement program, which would be twenty-six through thirty, and then the actual time band of the twenty-fifty plan that begins from twenty thirty-one all the way out to the year twenty fifty. So those different segments are the years or the time bands that we will be funding the different phases of each project. And you can scroll down to see which phase and how much money is going, is being allocated for each project.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any further discussion on this?
Thank you.
Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
For the record, Mayor Commission, permit number for that number is item, is thirty-eight eighty-one for the record. Thank you, Mayor.
With your indulgence, we're going to take a two-minute recess. There's something in my car I have to get. I'm sorry. And we are now on regular agenda. Item nineteen, this is the discussion of possible action regarding the charter review recommendations. At the start of the meeting, we had a workshop on this item and I took some notes. And if it's okay, I'd like to begin with the, with the housekeeping items, which can be handled by ordinance and not placed before the public for, for vote. Commissioners, if, if I have a motion to draft in a second, we will vote on that. It will all come back to us in the form of an ordinance in terms of the items that we can get into the specifics of that, of those particular housekeeping changes at that time.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion from the Vice Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hernandez. Is there any shit on the, on the housekeeping motion to direct that an ordinance come back to us on first reading? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Let me pause for a second to recognize Jack McCluskey, who's here. I want to thank him and everyone on the charter review board for their hard work. They were appointed late, very late in the process. They had, it was, it was hard to get folks appointed in time. I hope the next time we do this, we can appoint them and give them a lot more time so that they can meet and go through the items that are necessary. But we're very, very thankful for the work that they did. That committee is now disbanded. Correct, Mr. City Attorney?
Correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And so, and so we thank them for, for their effort. The next item that we have, we're going to go through one at a time, and I took some notes. The next item involves administration. Article four, entitled administration shall be revised by amending section one oh four entitled city manager of the charter of the City Pembroke Pines as follows. There should be one city manager who shall be chief administrative officer of the city. City manager shall be responsible to the commission for the administration of all affairs placed in his charge. By the way, that would have been an item to, to amend. And without objection, that will, the his will be their charge by or under this ordinance. Qualifications of city manager shall have a baccalaureate degree and three years' experience as city manager or assistant city manager. And the information that they added was, or three years comparable experience is determined by the city commission. Commissioner, Vice Mayor talked about reporting and the superintendent. There was a question also by the Vice Mayor with respect to whether it should be five years. Commissioner Hernandez also mentioned the superintendent. We, we mentioned during that discussion that with respect to the superintendent, we could put it in front of the voters or we could, city attorney, ask for a separate ordinance pursuant to section one oh four to deal with the questions about the superintendent of the charter schools, correct?
You could do a separate question for that.
So unless there's an objection.
Mayor, I'd like to.
Yes, go right ahead.
So it's, I, I like to give, add food for thought here more.
Go right ahead.
I, I, I still am very concerned that we as the school board, essentially for the charter school, that we have the superintendent report directly to us. And I, I think here, not only should the city manager be the chief administrative officer of the city, but should also be the superintendent of the city charter school system. And I could foresee that the city manager may then create a position that is oversees all the charter schools and is given, you know, for lack of better words, a deputy superintendent level of authority and things like that. But I still think that the superintendent should be reporting to us. And I think it still gives the city manager the flexibility to hire somebody in who is, who specializes in the school system in that way. So my recommendation here would, would be to add the language is the chief administrative officer and the superintendent of the city charter school.
So my, well, let me get a second to that first. Is there a second to that?
For a discussion, I'll second it.
Okay. Where, if, if we inserted it, where would Sam, where would that fit? Would it fit under the duties of the city manager? Would it fit in this section? I mean, you could, I suppose you could say the city manager who shall also serve as the superintendent of the Pembroke Pines Charter Schools shall have a baccalaureate degree and so forth. Or, or you could put it in the section one.
Here.
There should be a city manager or entity who shall be chief administrative officer of the city and superintendent of the Pembroke Pines Charter Schools. What's your preference?
In one, right here.
In one.
Right.
Is there consensus to add?
No, I, I don't, I don't agree.
Okay. Is that a motion?
That was my motion, yes.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Okay. So I just want to have the conversation. So the, the, the motion in front of us right now deals with number one, to, to make it clear that the language will be, there shall be a city manager or entity, the city manager, who shall be the chief administrative officer of the city and the superintendent of the Pembroke Pines Charter Schools. And then it continues. Discussion on the amendment.
If I may.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Entity. That's a problem for me right there.
Well, that's not the motion right now.
Well, well, okay, I'm.
I guess, if you want to talk about entity, we can talk about entity, but let's, let's stick to the motion.
Okay. So we, we are presuming passage. I am, I, I want to take a, a very careful, conservative approach. If the voters say no.
Okay.
Then what do we do? We would be forbidden to have a superintendent of schools?
No. The, 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 the city manager is still the superintendent of the schools. The Vice Mayor's motion is to insert that fact into the, into the charter.
So not to suggest that we're going to be doing this, Mayor, but there was a proposal back in twenty thirteen to privatize the system, which would have relieved the city manager of the superintendent authorities, potentially. There was a, there was, that the agreement would have given the city, under that management agreement, some say, but we weren't actually overseeing it. I just don't see it being a prudent thing. I can understand, I, I can embrace the, the, the idea of, but the execution of it is the greater concern. I don't think we need to touch this one.
Okay. Any other, any other discussion on this item? Commissioner Rodriguez?
Sorry. Just for clarification, we would be talking about, when we put the and, is it concerning the experience or would it simply be concerning that the person could serve, that our city administrator could serve as a superintendent or possibly have somebody else serve?
The, 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 the motion is, would not address the qualifications. It would address the, the.
Assigned tasks. Its accountability.
It's a, it's a, it's an assigned, it's an added assigned task.
Right.
In the, in the, part of the definition of the city manager's position.
It's, the, the point is that we are, we have two roles. We are a city commission and we are a school board. So all this is do is lining it up for the accountability of that leader in the school and that leader in the city to report to us.
Got it. And it's, it's on the reporting side?
It's on the reporting side, not the qualification side, yeah.
And to be clear, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
That if this motion passes, the direction would be that this position would be a direct report to the commission. That if this motion passes, the direction would be that this position would be a direct report to the commission because the manager and the superintendent are one and the same.
Correct.
Yes, thank you.
Any further discussion on this point?
Is that possible for us to make an ordinance? Or does this most definitely have to go to the public?
The vice mayor, the vice mayor didn't want it to go by ordinance. The vice mayor wanted it to go by charter language. However, the city attorney had said it could be done by ordinance and we wouldn't have to put this before.
No, this one would require charter amendment. This is, this is the substantive item. If you're adding.
No, 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 the, the phrase. We could, we could by ordinance direct the city manager to serve as superintendent.
You could.
Right.
That is true.
Right. Other duties as assigned.
Yeah.
But the, the vice mayor's motion is to include that language in the charter.
Correct. But that, but that leads the, essentially it says, and we could set up an ordinance for anything else other than the city manager, is that correct?
No. So, so, so I think the city attorney will explain to you. You can, you can, you can have, you can have a higher standard, but you can't have a lower standard. So for example, we, we discussed before about changing the four fifths to three fifths. That would require a charter change. Because it's a lower standard. So, so, but if we, if, if we passed an ordinance that said five fifths, I, well, no, actually, that one wouldn't work either because it's, it's that specific. It really depends on, 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 on the city attorney's opinion on that. City Attorney?
Again, if it be the wish of the commission to amend the charter in the context of the assigned tasks to the manager and to define the addition of the word superintendent of the charter schools, that would be substantive and would be a charter, would be an ordinance adopted by the commission, submitted to referendum to the voters of the city.
So it could be either. Vice Mayor?
Mayor?
I, I, I understand the, the element of the charter and I, I still stand behind that because we hold the dual role. I would just like to make sure that that is set in stone, that we have a superintendent that reports to us. And if it's the city manager, that's where I'm trying to get to. Let the city manager clearly say he's a city manager and also the superintendent. And it clearly reports to the commission.
Okay.
Sorry, I, I get that motion. My, I'm with you on the motion. Are, and we would be deciding for it to put on the ballot for this, this motion? Or we're still deciding which way we're going to go about that?
His motion is to put it on the ballot.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Just to be clear, it would be an ordinance, Commissioner Rodriguez, it's an ordinance which includes the ballot language of a referendum with a ballot title of no, no more than fifteen words and a ballot question of more than seventy-five words.
Thank you.
Two questions for the city attorney. First one, if it doesn't pass, what position is the commission in with respect to a superintendent?
Mayor, respond, Mayor?
Yes.
The end result is that you're in the same place tonight as you are, you would be then. You're not eliminating the city manager position, you're simply not articulating within the charter that it is a charter-driven position for which there's direct reporting to the commission.
My next question is, where in the charter does it state that the commission is, is, is a school board?
There's no direct reference in the charter itself, although you have all the legislative powers associated with, with local government in the charter defining the position you hold as a global, you know, catch-all for the, for the work that you do.
The same catch-all that the city manager has, who's currently a direct report to this, to the commission.
There's no reference to superintendent in the charter, you're correct.
So legislatively, through policy, we can direct the city manager to execute any and all administrative responsibilities that include a superintendent role.
You could provide for that if you so chose.
And that would be through ordinance?
It would be an ordinance.
So do we currently, because I don't think any of us were here when, when that was established in 1998. City manager, how did that come about? You became the superintendent. The, the commission became the board. And through, through a very strategic and specific finance and HR and risk and all the things that run the school board, we are sharing responsibilities amongst staff. And that was so that we could function without having any hiccup. My, my concern about the direct report of the superintendent, because right now we have legislative authority over the city manager and we can provide the city manager legislative, policy-driven responsibilities, any and all policies that we have. The policy to be the superintendent requires three-fifths vote. We can, we can direct the city manager to be the superintendent. Has, has any commission since 1998 ever given you a policy to be the superintendent? City manager?
I don't believe there's ever been a policy, however, it's always been accepted. The interesting thing is the city manager and the way we structured the charter school system in that we have shared uses of, in the schools, is the finance department is the finance department for the charter school. The HR department is the HR department for the charter school. If you're saying that the manager and the superintendent in this regards, you're assigning that individual as a dual role, then there isn't an issue. But if you create a separate department of superintendent, then we'd have to figure out, well, number one, that's an additional salary. Number two, you'd have to have some correlation between the city's department, because that's where we save money in that we're not creating a separate finance department, a separate HR department. It's something that I think that could be worked out in some form of a policy, if that's the desire of the commission. And right now, as the city manager, I report to the commission and anything that has to do with policy with the charter school, I bring forward as the city manager to the charter school, I mean, to the city commission.
Right. And our role, besides approving the budget, our role is actually any and all policies for the charter school we have to adopt and, and ask the superintendent, i.e. the city manager, to execute that direction. So we currently have that, and I do know this, and I'm glad you raised the point, City Manager Dodge. You're not being paid anything additional to be the superintendent and we're not being paid anything additional to be board members. And that is a tremendous amount of cost saving. So one of the things, Vice Mayor, I, I am concerned about is twofold. One, creating unnecessary obstacles for just common sense administrative function. The second, we, we have, we, we have a large amount of folks in the city of Pembroke Pines who do not want to see us succeed as a charter school system. And any opportunity to, to take out our kneecaps could actually happen. I do know, and it, it may not be a very popular decision for me to say this because I'm putting myself out there, there are folks who just don't want to see us succeed. And you put it on a ballot and you put it on the ballot, anything can happen, enough or down. Mayor Castillo and I put some, some really good language, really good language back in 2012 and on the ballot, and it failed. So we had to, I mean, we, we respected the voters' decision. But there were some really good things that we wanted to make changes on that, that we were unanimous in support of, and it did not pass. So I, I don't want to, I don't want to kneecap ourselves on this one. I really, really don't. If, if there is, if there's a way that we can achieve the same result that you're looking for through ordinance, let's do it. I can, I, I know that the, the commission ultimately has the final authority on everything that happens with the charter school system. Every single thing that happens. Outside of, the, the school board of our county holds our charter for, you know, for the super majority of them. And then we have the other counties for FSHU. But we are it. We're not paying, we're not being paid anything additional to do it. It is assumed responsibility. And every commission that's ever sat up here has, has worked diligently to execute that, that position. So I hear what you're saying. I just don't see, I just don't see how the, how the, how the, how it could be executed without causing friction. I just, I just don't see it.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
No, sorry.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I, so I will say that I am not opposed to hearing the voice of the public. If, if this is about doing something and and excluding the public, if the public doesn't want the city manager to be the superintendent and so be it, let it be said and let it be known. But I, I don't know that I agree necessarily with people out there trying to hurt the charter. I have not been privy to that, to be perfectly honest with you. I don't get that kind of earshut from folks, so.
Not to, not to debate you, but for six years, from twelve until you got here, it was some significant things going on. We almost lost the system as a result of outside influence. We, we had, we, we filled up a football stadium and there were, and, and we had folks working against us out in the parking lot. It was, we've, we've moved past that. But it's, it sticks with me about the possibility of how fragile this system is. And I too certainly trust the public. But what I'm not hearing, and I've never heard in the thirteen years I've been here, is the city manager should not be the superintendent of the schools. I don't know if the mayor has ever heard it, but I, I've never heard a member of the public come forward to say, you know what? This is wrong, he shouldn't be doing it. Because they believe he's being paid. And once you tell him, he's not being paid, we're not being paid, they're like, that's, that's when things just kind of calm down. So unless, and if, if you have, if you have something that, that folks have come forward, you know, this, bring it. Let us debate that. Let us hear that. Let, let us review that information. But thirteen years, I've never heard someone from the desk, I've never received an email or a text.
She won.
Okay. Any, any further discussion on?
No, sir.
I have, I have one question. Mr. City Attorney? Is it possible to make two ballot questions out of this section? Or does the law require us to have one ballot question out of, so that if one should not gain the necessary number of votes, the other one still has a chance to pass?
Then they respond, Mayor, the single subject rule still prevails in drafting ordinances, much like constitutional amendments in Florida. This is, however, in the same section of the charter regarding city manager, there, there, there. If the premise is that you're fearful that, that a change in the charter would not pass because of the combining the two in some fashion, you have the ability to segregate the two and make them separate questions.
So we can bifurcate these two questions?
As separate questions. And you, but one is not.
Such, such that, such that if, if the, if the vice mayor's motion should pass today, we have the option to bifurcate the question. And if number one before the voters fails, number two succeeds, number two would be applied, but number one would stay the same?
Number, if number one fails, number two passes, number two prevails. It would be, but you can't make them contingent upon the other. You can't confuse the voters.
But we can bifurcate the questions.
You can, you can adopt one A or you can adopt one B. If you adopt one A, then you do, you can adopt one B. But if you don't want to adopt one A, if you do want to adopt one B, you can do that as well. You could do two ordinances.
Okay, I got it. Okay. So the questions can be bifurcated on the ballot, is my question. And you're, you're telling me yes?
We can do some creative drafting and, and achieve the result.
Okay. Any further discussion on the vice mayor's motion? Okay, clerk will call the roll. The motion is, there should be a city manager or entity. The city manager who shall be the chief administrative officer of the city. The city manager shall be responsible to the commission for the administrat- the city manager who shall also serve as the superintendent of the Pembroke Pines Charter Schools shall be responsible to the commission for the administrative of all city affairs placed in his charge by or under this charter. And as I'm reading this, it, it sort of implies that it's already there. Because it says the city manager shall be responsible to the commission for the administration of all city affairs placed in his charge by and under this charter. So.
That, that's what I'm trying to articulate.
You know, if we, if we place the Pembroke Pines Charter Schools under his charge as, as superintendent, I, I, I'm, I'm struggling to understand why inserting those words is necessary. But what, what was your point again on that, Vice Mayor?
It was because he was, shall be the chief administrative officer of the city and the superintendent of the city charter school.
Oh, that's the motion, okay.
Right. It was all in the first sentence.
But then in the second sentence, it says, the city manager shall be responsible to the commission for the administration of all city affairs placed in his charge by or under this cha- this charter.
It doesn't, it, understand.
Okay.
The first sentence though makes it clear that, that he is the chief administrative officer of the city and the city superintendent. Therefore, the city manager then is in charge of, you know, all the affairs of his charge.
Mr. City Attorney, you, you, you're clear on the language?
That I understand.
You're clear on the language? City Attorney? You're clear on the language?
I'm sorry, Mayor.
You're clear on the amended language?
I am.
Okay. Clerk, call the roll.
Wait, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
I have a question. So if we're setting it in the place, I, in that first sentence, chief administrative officer and superintendent.
Right.
So does that take away the power in the future? Let's say Mr. Dodge isn't here, the next person wants to have a separate superintendent, they cannot, they have to serve as a superintendent.
They'd have to appoint a deputy.
A deputy.
They would hire somebody to be a department director.
Or the chief operating officer, the director of education or whatever.
Mr. Mayor, just to be clear, your, the accuracy of these comments are very important for the record because what you're suggesting is if the item is, would put into an ordinance form, approved by the voters, it would link the position of city manager along with the superintendent position. However, as you just discussed, in the event that that were not, we're not able to be, to be done, then the manager could delegate that to create a deputy position.
Okay.
Under the manager, because the manager's direct report to the commission.
We're good?
Mayor, just one question, because you said we're going to get back to it. The word entity.
Yes.
Now the time to talk about that?
Yes, that was, that was in the charter before.
Right. Remember back in twelve? I believe we, we never addressed to take it out. The city manager chose to come back as an at-will, but that certainly was a topic of conversation with a lot of debate. Unlike this one with the superintendent, there was a lot of debate for a period of years.
Yes, that would be the subject of a, of a subsequent amendment if someone wanted to make it. Right now, we're just focusing on the superintendent language. And if somebody wants to make an additional amendment, we can do that. So let's just, let's just proceed orderly right now with the vice mayor's amendment. And if you want to talk about entity, we can do that. Okay, everyone clear? Clerk, call the roll.
Vice Mayor, good?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Short?
No.
Mayor Castillo?
Yes. And by your vote, that is included. Now, Commissioner Schwartz, you want to talk about entity?
Yes, Mayor, but this would, I feel this is like a new item and I want to, I want to hold to my.
You can.
I, I want to hold to what I said in the workshop. I don't think tonight's the time to.
Okay. There'll be, there'll be other times to, to discuss it. The, ultimately where we're headed is creating a, a motion to draft and there'll be two, there'll be two readings of that, of their motion and there'll be other times to talk about entity if you want, if you wish.
So would that be, would that be the time to strike in the first or second reading?
Once, once, once the ordinance come back, comes back, Commissioner, it, it belongs to all of us. We can do whatever we want with it.
But.
And we can even, we can even change our minds on, on anything that we vote for.
Right.
So once, once, once the items come back, we, we deliberate on, on, on the ordinance. Right now, we're just giving direction to staff. the ordinance. Right now, we're just giving direction to staff as to what they should put in, into the first draft. Okay?
Yep.
Okay. Subsection two, qualifications. There was a discussion between three and five years. What's your pleasure?
My motion would be to leave it three years.
Is there a second to the motion to leave it for three years? I'll second the motion to leave it for three years. But discussion?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, it's just, I just want to get confirmation. So typically, when, you know, we are looking for a city manager, we have a pretty elaborate job announcement, call it, you know, to a recruiting firm, and there's a whole lot of things, and we all get asked questions about what it is that we're looking for. And that's something, before it goes out, that we would have to agree on what that job announcement sort of looks like. Is that correct? And so we can ask for, in that period of time, a, 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 a more stringent standard.
Yes, we can.
Correct? So we could say ten years if that's what we wish.
Absolutely.
Right.
But what this does is it preserves three. You can, you, you can go, you can go from three to ten, but you can't go from, from, from fives to three. This is, this is the minimum standard. And if we collectively decide that we want more, we can do more. But this is like the minimum requirement. So the first question is the years, based on my notes. There's been a motion made for three, it's been seconded. Any further discussion?
For, sorry, for both, for both parts, the years of experience and then the three years comparable, comparable experience as well, right?
Yes, it would apply to all three, but, but we're going to take that, we're going to take that separately. Right now, it's just three years. Hearing no more. Is there any from the public? Clerk, call the roll on three years.
Mayor, just to be clear?
Yes.
Section four point zero one, subsection two, the current language is three years of experience. The change proposed by the charter board is three years.
So there's no need, there's no need to vote?
Correct.
The, 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 the motion is to keep it the same.
Just look at the underlinings, the, the proposed changes to add.
My motion was, Mayor, it was.
The motion is to keep it the same, because the, there was a discussion about five. So this is to keep it the same. Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Short?
Yes.
Mayor Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes. Okay. So that passes. So now the next, the next thing is the, the three years comparable experience is determined by the city commission, which is the charter board's recommended language. Is there a motion for discussion?
Recommend to keep it the same.
Just to add, Mr. Mayor, if you will, that's added, it's not in the charter now.
Yeah, it's not in there. So you, you, you would have to add it. The motion would be to reject it.
They recommend, you, you want to keep it the same, you don't want it, you want that, you don't want that language?
What, what has been recommended?
So what's underlined is, is what they recommend.
Is proposed.
It's what you asked for.
Correct. And I'm saying.
Right. You want it?
Yes.
Okay. So there's a motion to adopt the charter board's recommendation. Is there a second?
Second.
It's seconded by Commissioner Rodriguez. Any, any discussion on this?
I'll quickly add, Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
It, it, it gives the, it gives the commission way too much latitude to determine what three years is. I believe, I believe the, the proper way forward through the search process and all that, we can always go up. But this isn't the time to, to debate. If somebody from, I have to vote no. It, it, it just, it just leaves us wide open to too much interpretation.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion on the item? Any from the public? Clerk will call the roll on the added language.
Mayor, we did not get the, who made the motion?
Maker of the motion.
So vice mayor made the motion, it was seconded by Commissioner Hernandez. Um, Commissioner Rodriguez, excuse me. Yeah.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yep.
Commissioner Short?
No.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Castillo?
Yes. And that finishes our discussion on the first item.
Correct.
The second item is Article Four. This is city manager appointment removal and compensation, which is interesting, because it doesn't talk about compensation. But, okay. Compensation and benefits shall be fixed, but it says, yeah, it does talk about it.
Later, it's, it showed. Yeah.
Okay. The discussion here was, it's, it, it currently says four fifths, and the discussion was three fifths. Does somebody want to make a motion on three fifths?
I'll motion it.
On the appointments?
On the appointments and the removals.
Point of.
I actually like to separate those two, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
You actually brought some very interesting point about the, about the appointment versus the removal.
At the, at the county, they had one more than a majority to appoint.
Yes, sir, I.
And a majority to dismiss.
Yes, sir.
Is that what you want?
I'd like to keep a.
Four fifths, four fifths to appoint and three fifths to remove.
That would be my motion, sir.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to that motion?
Second for discussion.
The, uh, Commissioner Rodriguez, seconded for discussion. Discussion. Who wants to talk on this?
I just, I want to understand, and obviously, because I didn't go back to read on this, I didn't know that previously it had been three fifths.
It was.
It was three fifths. What moved it over to four fifths, or what this, what was that discussion?
It's really hard to say. It, it sort of evolved organically. Uh, there was.
What, what year, what year was the change?
What year was the change?
I believe it was about nineteen eighty-two, when the charter board, the size of the commission, from seven to five.
If I may.
And the conversation at that time had been, prior to that, I think there had been sixteen city managers, based on the three fifths vote, in about twenty years. And in, and then it was changed later. Mr. McCloskey may have a better recollection of it as well.
So, Mayor, so, so basically, we started off as aldermen, and then, and then we had, then we had commissioners, we had seven, not fives. Nineteen eighty-two is when the city was divided into districts, it was at large. So the reason for the change was specifically because of what the, what the manager's alluding to. There were more members of the commission, therefore the number actually had to be higher at the time, and it remained the four fifths for stability purposes.
Yeah, but I, I, I want to make a point of clarification here. So during my time, we made it four fifths. So it had to be three fifths before?
It was three fifths before.
Okay.
So there was a discussion, I think, once before about changing it to three fifths. I don't know if that, I don't think that passed.
But Sam, Sam, do you have, do you have a, do you have a, any language there as to when the four fifths? I think it was in twelve. Let me take a look.
No, Mayor. Twelve is when it was introduced to go back to three, and it didn't, it never made it to the ballot. It was a three to two.
Well, let's, let's, let's let the city attorney give us the, the information. Because as I, as I recall, we did not recommend it to go to three fifths. We recommended it to go to four fifths. So it had to be three fifths before.
There wasn't, if I may, Mr. Mayor, the, the, there was an amendment adopted in twenty twelve, eleven six, twenty twelve.
To make it what?
Again, I'm looking at the footnotes to the actual charter itself.
Yeah.
There was an election eleven seven oh six, and also eleven six, twenty twelve. And, and without looking at the actual ordinance, I can't know exactly what was on the titles, because the, the codification doesn't show you, just give you the adoption date.
So, so it became, it became four fifths.
It did.
In twelve.
More than likely.
So it had to be three fifths before that.
More than likely.
So.
Can we do some research on it? Because the, the reason being, and I'm not questioning this to the attorney, but it's the entire section that was put in front of voters, not a specific word.
We can do, we can do, we can do some research. The question now before us is, let's go for this city, what do we want right now? And between now and, between now and first reading, they can, they can provide, they can memo us or provide additional backup as to what the history was, and I think they should. But the question now is, do you want four fifths or three fifths? The, the vice mayor's motion is to appoint by four fifths and to remove by three fifths. That was seconded for discussion. Does anybody oppose that? Does anybody support that?
Yeah.
You got to help me.
So we certainly, and, Mr. Mayor, you bring up the fact about the county, but, you know, when you take a look at the other cities too, again, like I said, this is pretty archaic in the sense of being a four one, in terms of for a, a removal. I mean, you look at Fort Lauderdale, it's majority vote, Sunrise, majority vote. And I happen to know two specific cities I have intimate knowledge of, which is Deerfield and Cooper City, which was majority vote.
Mostly.
I mean, there's, it, this is a very old way of, of managing a government agency. And, Mr. Mayor, you put it very well. If you have a city manager that cannot keep three of his, the majority of his board happy, he shouldn't still be here.
Right.
I mean, it's simple as that. It's, it's not about, you know, having a four fifths, creating longevity. I don't believe in that at all. I, I see the talent of the person as what makes longevity, not the fact that they're able to pit several of us against each other so that they retain a job. I will tell you, in a four one, or four fifths like this, that's the secret sometimes of keeping the job.
And, 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 and understand that when the Pembroke Pines City Commission is, is faced with this responsibility to select another city manager, we're probably going to go through, we will probably adopt a procedure very similar to how we appointed a, a, an interim commissioner, you know? We'll whittle it down to two, and then we will have our discussion between the two, and we will make a decision. And if we can't come to a decision, I, I know I'll have a quarter in my pocket. That's only a joke. And, but we will, we will, we will make our decision. We will get to the four votes to appoint, and then understand that terminating the city manager is one of the very, very few motions that is always in order. It does not have to be advertised, correct, city attorney?
You, to direct report to you.
So it's, it's, it's really just creating the rule that makes the most sense for us.
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm with all of you on the part of termination, which I hope we never have to do. The part that I'm not supportive of is four to actually appoint.
Okay.
So that, it's not that I disagree with anything that's been said here, but four to appoint is where I, I, I won't be supportive. But if there is, when we get to the point of termination.
Hold on a second.
Then I, I could be supportive. I think four is a very high bar, and it's basically a continuation. I believe, Vice Mayor, I think you use the word archaic. It's really a fifty percent continuation of that. And that's why I can't be supportive.
Okay.
Point of clarification.
Yes.
The language is to hire a city manager. We can appoint an interim of three fifths. And there's no time limit on how long that interim, according to our charter, can actually serve.
Yeah, but that's not in front of us right now.
I, I understand it's not in front of us. I'm, that's why I have to point a clarification for my new colleague.
It's because I made a mistake. I used the wrong word. Thank you, Commissioner. It meant I, what I was referring to is hiring a city manager.
Right. Vice Mayor, I'm hearing three and three, three fifths and three fifths. Do you want to amend your motion, or what do you want to?
So I can, yes, sir, I can amend it to a, just across the board, three fifth vote.
Okay. Is there a second to three and three?
A second.
There's a second to three and three. Let's have discussion. I'm going to call on you, Jack, as the end. Is there, is there any discussion on three and three?
Yes. Mayor.
Yes, yes.
The charter review board reviewed the section and made no recommendations for a change in three fifths or four fifths.
No, this was a commission item.
I understand. I'm just, for the record, the, 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 the citizens did not rise or even the, the discussion to change four fifths to three fifths, according to all of the minute sets in our backup, never occurred.
Okay. Commissioner McCloskey?
Sorry, before he comes up, I just have a quick thing. So if it's not something that was brought up, would this be considered part of the new things that we're looking into?
We have absolute control over this, over this charter. We can, this was a, a, a commission motion. It doesn't have to come from the charter board. We're thankful for the work that the charter board has done, but we are the custodians of the charter of our county. And we get to decide what we place in, only we get to decide, look at this place before the voters. Yes?
Jack McCloskey, twenty-two forty-one, Northwest Eighty-Second Way. I have lived here in Pembroke Pines for fifty-five years. I caught on the tail end of a seven-member commission, having maybe twelve managers in as many years. Half the time, they pick somebody out of the audience. Those were the old times. We fought rather hard to get the four-fifth vote. It's not archaic, Tom. It's just a thought. It's, for example, I never would have thought in my lifetime that I would live to see a presidential candidate want to get rid of the Constitution for some of the other things that particular candidate has advocated. But you can see that happening here. If it only take, if it only takes three votes to get rid of or to hire, it's a rather weak individual that you're going to hire. I would urge you to leave it just the way it is.
Thank you very much.
I'm not through yet. Thank you.
We have a, we have a long way to go, sir. Please, please wrap up.
Thank you. I would just urge you very strongly to reconsider this.
Okay.
It's a long time before we got a Charlie Dodge and a Woody Hampton. And before that, it was just Katie bar the door.
Thank you very much.
Easily be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Any further discussion on this side?
One point. Yes. To Commissioner McCloskey, that was very offensive. I'm very sorry. That was extremely offensive. I was born in the year nineteen eighty-two. Charters are reviewed by elected bodies, they are amended, and the voters have their say. I think you were very disrespectful to the vice mayor. I just wanted to put that on record.
Okay. Any further discussion? The clerk will call the roll on three fifths for vote, hiring and termination.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Short?
No.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Castillo?
Yes. And by your vote, that item is done. And we are now on.
Mr. Mayor, just before we move on, I just want to make sure that we got a clarification on a statement I had made when I was speaking about this earlier, that we would have a carve out, which would be allowing the city manager to be grandfathered into, you know, a four-fifth vote.
Now, I, I gave that some thought, and I didn't share this before, but we can, we can put an effective date into it. In other words, effective, you know, you can leave the language the way it is, but you can say effective twenty twenty-six, or, you know, you can pick a year. In other words, um um effective, um um, you know, you can leave the language the way it is, but you can say effective twenty twenty-sixth or, you know, you can pick a year.
Or or mayor, or at the time in which.
No, we can't, we can't say somebody's name or.
No, not name, I'm I'm.
Or the current manager at the time.
City Attorney, is that possible?
That's just odd.
That's possible, legally doable.
You asking a question?
I'm asking the question.
If you tie, if you may respond there, if you're tying it to a person, that probably isn't appropriate, but if you're tying it to a date, you can, you can tie it to a date.
Yeah. So you could say twenty twenty-sixth, you could say. I don't know.
Would it be inappropriate to say twenty thirty-six? I mean, because if it, if it is a, if it is a, if it is a date in the foreseeable future, basically it's a tink flip.
So somebody would have to make a a uh um an amendment.
An effective date of twenty thirty-six.
Okay, is there, is there a second to an effective date of twenty thirty-six? It dies for lack of a second.
Effective date of twenty thirty-five.
Okay.
Mister ma, Mister Mayor, um this still has to come back to us, right?
Yes.
So can we reserve that for when this comes back?
You sure can. You sure can.
I'd like to have, yeah.
Okay, you wanna skip over that? All right. Now we are on a section, um.
Four points, zero three.
In the event that it should be reintended.
Article four, section four point zero three, Mayor, on the issue of the deletion of the word disability.
No, we're on, we're on uh four fifths, but now we have removal and we we talked about.
I'm sorry, the hearing, the issue.
Okay, now the hearings.
Yep.
Folks, this, this, this is, I mean, it's just totally unnecessary. This stuff about hearings and giving the city manager due process, city manager, just like anyone else, has due process under employment law. It's just, it's just, first of all, no one would avail themselves of this. Because it would be a career killer. And and secondly, I just, I don't see the point of it. So uh it's, it it's pointless to have these hearings and to, and then, and then that we should, that we must have the hearing? I I just don't see the point of it. The 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 city manager works at the pleasure of the city commission, that's it. And if uh if the uh, if the, if the commission wants to make a move, they should make a move. We shouldn't have to go through the spectacle of a, of a, of a public hearing that hurts not only, then we, under these circumstances, even if the city manager didn't want a hearing, we'd be forced by charter to have one. I just don't see the point of of this at all. I I would erase this whole section. And 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 end it at B. There's nothing in one, two, C, or D that captures any interest for me. I would end it at B.
Mr. Mayor, if I may ask a question on.
Yes, sir.
What? What is the current language in uh the city manager's employment contract? Does it include the same language in there?
I have a contract.
I don't think he's, 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 he's currently a city employee.
Under contract.
Under contract.
I don't know what the contract says.
Is the contract language have the same verbiage in the contract language?
I don't know.
I don't believe it does, I don't recall it.
He hasn't read it in years. Now, we can, we can, we can dispense with this discussion again until first reading, but I'm definitely gonna bring it up again, I just don't see the point of this, I think it's.
Well, I, Mister, Mister Mayor, I just wanna state that, you know, this, to me, looks like contract language.
Right.
That's why I'm asking that question.
Right.
And if it's not in the current city manager's contract, maybe, maybe if we bring this out and we can incorporate it into his, amend his contract such that this language is in there. Uh, you know, which preserves his right without having to go through a date certain which this becomes effective. I I think that it should be removed and it should be a negotiated item.
I don't have a problem, I I myself would not have a problem doing that, but then it can't say must.
What?
That we must have a hearing.
I believe the charter um allows the city manager um to um uh have an attorney and and we have language in the charter already.
Well, city man, anyone can have an attorney.
I mean, that's the option of the city manager, if 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 um, I'm I'm not personalizing, if if a city manager of Pembroke Pines wants to challenge a firing, they have, they have the right to do so. Um now, the question of whether or not we have to have a hearing forcing us to do that, I think the, I believe the intent, the way I read um the the language, the way I listened to the audio, which I hope all of you did, uh with with the board, is they don't wanna have a uh here today, gone tomorrow, uh you know, quick, uh you know, a quick um Gong Show snatch, right? On live TV, uh that it needs to be publicly noticed that there's going to be a motion to terminate.
No, that's incorrect, sir. Uh the the, a a a motion to terminate the manager is one of the few, is one of the few motions that can be made at any meeting and it does not require advanced notice.
No.
City manager works at the pleasure of the city commission.
No, I understand that, Mayor, I'm not, I'm not debating that, I'm saying the intent of the of the Charter Review Board is to give the public notice of such action.
Under the law, they're not entitled to that notice.
Under the law currently, yes, that's the reason why they, they, they're recommending.
You just said that the, that the uh city uh uh manager has a right to this and a right to that. He's, he's, he's got a right to hire a a a, an attorney. There are employment laws that protect employees against discrimination, against this, that, the other, but if a commission wants to make a change in 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 management, that's, that falls to this day.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I don't mean to be overly overbearing, so to speak, the only qualifier to your comment in that which has been considered by the commission is something which occurred in recent years, which is the forty-eight-hour rule of the county charter, which, which does prevail in the city. And it's for any, any decision of the final decision-maker, which is the commission, it does require the forty-eight hours notification. That's under the county charter, not the city charter.
So, so City Attorney, are you suggesting that uh the firing of a city manager cannot be done under new business?
I believe that that would be correct. Because the forty-eight-hour rule requires the the advertising and the posting of a decision before this, so the public has a right to be heard.
Okay, so.
And that, again, that's, that's recent times, that's not twenty years ago, that's, that's over the past couple of years where the charter was corrected and modified to apply county, apply countywide.
And typically what happens in those scenarios is the manager resigns. Cause it's better for the manager. So, I mean, some of this has to be about the practicality of how these things actually go down. And we don't have these hearings. You, I've never heard of such a thing.
Well, now.
It would be a career killer.
Well, now we have a forty-eight-hour rule, so it's a moot point.
No, what happens is, what happens is that the manager gets word that a motion like this needs to be made. A uh an emergency meeting is then called forty-eight hours, in which a vote is taken. And between that time and the other, a a negotiated exit is the, is is arranged. That's the way this happens. It's the way it happens everywhere. This language is totally unnecessary, much less imposing it on the city commission that we must have a hearing.
But we must have a meeting within forty-eight hours, so it's the same thing.
Those are, those are, those are. They are very different things, very different things. Let's, let's stay focused on the fact. The que, the question here is, do we need one, two, C, and D anymore? I believe we do not.
I think C is necessary.
C is compensation and benefits shall be fixed by city commission, even that is redundant, of course it is. All compensation and benefits are fixed by the city commission, it's just not necessary.
Again, Mister Mayor, though, I I just, as I keep reading through this over and over again, I just keep finding this as being contract language.
Yes.
In an employment contract.
It just doesn't belong in the charter. I believe it should be.
Make a motion.
Well, okay. Vice Mayor, I will make a motion to eliminate one, two, C, and D.
Second.
All right, we got a um motion in a second, any further discussion? Public, are there any public comment? Just to be clear of the motion, if I can, Mister Mayor, you're dealing with section four point zero two, correct?
Correct.
And you're seeking to delete? One, two, C, and D. You're not deleting one, one and two of four point oh one, you're, you're dealing with four point oh two, correct? We're doing, we're dealing with four point oh two subsection B one, B two, C and D.
Yeah, that's correct.
That's what I wanna be clear, C, that's different.
I'm I'm eliminating B one, two, C, and D.
Uh Mister McCloskey.
Jack McCloskey, again, twenty-two forty-one, Northwest Eighty-Second Way. Angelo is absolutely correct. There is no need for these, this part. Uh the, the motion, I think, was made by one of the attorneys that were on, appointed on the board.
Wait, what do you mean, the motion was made by an attorney appointed to the board, to do what?
On this motion. Was presented by one of the attorneys that was a member of the board. I believe they were Angelo's appointees.
Okay.
And they're totally unnecessary.
I I think Mister McCloskey's saying is it was not unanimous item, right? There was some discussion and it just.
No, that's not what he's saying. What he's saying was that my appointees recommended it. Just goes to show how fair I am.
Yeah. Tall head.
And I respect them both.
Thank you, Mister McCloskey. All right, Mister Vice Mayor.
No further discussion, I'm sorry. It just, one doesn't have to have a J D uh to tell, to be able to tell when you read it that it sounds like a contract.
Yeah.
So I'll be supporting you.
Would it be, can um, can we make a contingent on the fact that there's obviously redundant, but that that is part of a contract? Instead of just simply deleting it, would it be part of a, a, the general contract of the city manager?
Well, it would be a negotiated item. We, it's typically a negotiated item.
He's got the gavel, but between first and second reading, we can ask for that information to come.
Just to make sure that it is part of it.
Copy of the contract between first and second reading, uh between now and first reading?
All right. We got that? Okay. No further discussion? All right, uh all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those pose. Carries unanimously, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So now we're on Article Four Administration.
Mister Mayor, may I ask you a question?
Yes.
Going back to this word must versus may, is that still?
That's gone.
Gone.
Must has to, no, we didn't talk about that item, about must.
You deleted.
And B, you, you, you got rid of B one, two, whatever.
Deletion excluded. And Mr. Vice Mayor?
Must versus may, I think, needs to be addressed.
Where is must?
Here.
Upon the city of public. Yeah, so we would have to delete that from B as well. That's consistent with the motion. So upon demand by the public, it must be held, final vote, at least ten days, all of that has to come out.
Just to clarify, Mister Vice Mayor, Mister Mayor, if I may, you're, you're essentially, again, four point zero two, you're deleting B.
Everything, everything that follows the word upon. Should be deleted, that's my motion.
After what words are?
Upon, so it's only the first, it's only the first sentence that survives as amended to to three fifths.
Four point zero two, A survives and it's modified to three fifths.
Right. And then, and then the first sentence in B survives at three fifths and everything after that, starting with upon, goes.
Which eliminates one and two thereafter.
Correct.
So. Eliminate, did you list them?
That's my motion.
Mister Mayor.
It's just do with what we just voted for.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
By Commissioner Rodriguez, any further discussion on this? Any discussion from the public? Hearing none, uh, city clerk, uh, or, excuse me, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All pose. Okay, carries unanimously, thank you.
Okay, so that's done. Now we're on Article Four, administration shall be revised by amending four oh three acting city manager. And the language that was there was by letter filed with the commission, the city manager shall designate a qualified city administrative officer to exercise their powers and perform the duties of city manager during their temporary absence. During such absence, the commission may remove the designated acting city manager by affirmative vote of.
Three fifths.
Yeah, we, we're consistent with three fifths. Is, is there consensus that we're consistent with three fifths?
That, if I may, Mayor, that's, that's what we, that's what we currently have standing now. So if, if the city manager can appoint, um, and if he's.
No, what we currently have is four fifths.
No, that's for the ma, that's for the, that's, I will personalize this now, so we can have a more clarity on this. Mister Dodge appoints a, an assistant city manager to run the city while he's away.
Right.
Something happens to Mister Dodge.
Right.
If we don't like the appointment, we can remove the appointment and we can, by three fifths, we don't have to go with whoever Mister Dodge appointed prior to um, uh, you know, prior to the trip, okay?
Right.
So we have, we've always had a three fifths for an interim. It's four fifths to higher. That's the appointment.
That's not what this says. This is under the section of acting city manager. And the way I'm reading this, Mister Goran, tell me if I'm misreading it, is that the current charter says four fifths.
It does. If I may respond, if you're looking at, if you're looking at four point zero three, that the whole section does still say the, the manager by letter makes an appointment. And as Commissioner Schwartz said, you don't, and and the manager is unavailable, so to speak, and you don't like that, that replacement, this does require four fifths.
So I don't, I, but I don't think that we should get involved in his, in his decision to appoint an acting in his absence. It's in his disability.
But they proposed to strike, then, Mayor, I'm sorry for the interruption.
And and what, and what the Charter Board wanted to do is to strike disability, and that's the part I don't get. It's, it's during, it's, it, during his absence, he should be able to appoint somebody uh that 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 he wants. Well, he's, he's away for a week, he's away for three days, he's away for two weeks. But it, but if the, if the manager is disabled, this language takes away from the commission the ability to appoint someone as an interim. Correct, City Attorney?
That could be an argument.
And 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 then it, it requires us. This is just complicated. In the event, what it should say is, in the event of a disability, the commission may remove the designated, may, may appoint an acting city manager by three fifths vote.
And and maybe it's more of a definition issue with the word disability, I mean, a disability could be a broken arm.
Yeah.
You know?
I get it.
And and I understand where you're at, it's, if there's incapacity.
Incapacity is really, is, is that a better, is that a better word, city manager, to describe the dilemma that I'm describing? Is incapacity the correct word? What is the better word?
I think he's asking you the definition of that disability versus incapacity. He asked, he asked the manager. Huh? He asked the manager, but I'm happy to try to answer, we can gently. Oh, it's you. Yeah. I am, that's true.
All right, I'm asking the attorney.
If it's easier to understand and it's more clear in the context of what the meaning is intended to be, then that's a choice of words you could make. Is, you know.
Because Mister Dodge is incapable of incapacitating.
That's a new contract.
So, so.
That's the contract language.
So, so what would the better, what would the better, what would the better uh phrase be?
I mean, incapacity has a, a, a fair meaning to those who read it, so if incapacity is a word of choice.
Would it be the, the ability to discharge the uh, the role, the, the responsibility? I mean, it kinda likes the Twenty-Fifth Amendment, if you're unable to discharge.
Yeah, if, if, if the manager, I agree with Jay, if the manager is, is incapacitated and unable to discharge his duties by a three-fifths vote, the commission may appoint an interim. Is that fair? Does everyone like that?
Some of them.
There's a motion, is there a second? This is just for drafting now, we can't.
Second.
Okay, we, we, we don't have to bite, you know, we're just nibbling at the apple right now. This is just for drafting.
She seconded.
Okay, any further discussion on that?
As, as, I just, this seems very simple, um, but I just wanna make clear.
Yeah.
This has nothing to do with, if the city manager appoints.
No.
An assistant, uh, uh, an A C M to come in as interim while he is on vacation. An A C M to come in as interim while he is on vacation. This has nothing to do with.
In the event of incapacity.
Yes. Uh, that's how governments work.
Right.
Municipal and county governments, if the administrator or the manager is out, they can appoint an A C M.
Right.
If there's an incapacitate, incapacitation or something else, our local Twenty-Fifth Amendment, it's, it's pretty straightforward.
Yes.
I'm supportive.
It is the local Twenty-Fifth Amendment, okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah, point of clarification.
Yes.
Uh, the same manager, uh, has the ability to appoint the fire chief or the police chief as well, does not have to be an A C M. That's okay, I, I wasn't saying that. I was saying, in the event Mr. Dodge takes a vacation. He can appoint Michael Stam, Christina Sworson to serve as acting city manager.
He can appoint, he can designate a qualified city administrative officer, the charter says.
Yep. It's not limited to.
That's what it says.
Correct.
Okay, so, so, so. The, you, you have the language, Mr. City Attorney?
We'll create the language.
Okay, by three fifths vote. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Now we're on to Article.
Four point oh six.
Administration shall be revised by amending Department of Finance. The Department of Finance should be responsible for administration of the financial affairs of the city. You know, it's, it's there, I, I just don't think this needs to go before the, the, the voters. The, the question was governmental accounting. No one's going to hire a, a finance director unless, unless they have the, the, the rest, the requisite, the background to do the job. Just don't think we need, we need this.
Make a motion, Mayor.
Yeah.
No, make, make the motion.
It, it, it's, I, I, I just moved to leave it alone.
Second.
I have a question, I don't know.
Yes.
Okay, when we're saying, uh, major in accounting and fi, finance is what it's currently at, right? Does that mean two different degrees? You have to get a, an accounting degree and a finance degree?
Accounting is a, is a, is a discipline in finance. I, I, I don't even understand what this, this is all about. You can't be a finance major if you don't have accounting. I mean. You could be a lawyer, you could be a lawyer, there's no accounting for lawyers.
But to be clear, what was your, what was your motion, Mr. Mayor?
I just, I just think that we, we, we should reject this recommendation from the board and just move on. Leave, leave the language to the way.
Commissioner Schwartz seconded, so, oh, I'm just waiting for the vote.
All right, all of the favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're moving on. Then the next, then the next item was the Charter Review Board shall be revised by amending section seven oh one entitled Charter Board. What they're saying is that the, that the mayor shall appoint three individuals citywide and the city commissioners shall appoint two individuals from the city commissioners' respective district. This is easily done by, by, uh, by amending the, uh, the appointments ordinance. Correct, City Attorney?
It's possible, um, and legally, I'm looking at the language, the mayor shall appoint three individuals, that's very clear. And each city commissioner shall appoint two individuals.
Right.
Um, what you're saying is not adding the language from the city commissioners' respective district and do it by ordinance?
Yeah.
As an amendment to the, uh, the master ordinance we have.
I, I think it can be.
I think it.
You can have just a special.
It's so much easier, it's right. And, and we just, we just follow it because it's in the amendment ordinance. So we put Charter Board in there.
Isn't thirty-two. We could, in, in chapter thirty-two of the code, it references a number of different boards except for several, but it could be done in that chapter. We could do it by ordinance.
So, so the motion should be to handle this by, by ordinance.
Separate ordinance.
Is there a motion?
Well, the motion would be to, uh, not accept the change.
Not accept the change, but to handle it by ordinance.
Yes.
Okay, so that's, Vice Mayor is making that, uh, and it's seconded by Commissioner Hernandez, any discussion?
If I may, Mayor, that's, that's modifying chapter thirty-two, which is the, the comprehensive section regarding appointments to boards.
Right. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, we're on our way. Housekeeping, we're done. I think we are done. Hold on, let's just make sure, oh, uh, Mike wanted to talk about elections and Maria wanted to talk about qualifying period.
Oh, and I want to talk about.
Excuse me.
And I want to talk about league business.
And you want to talk about?
The league business when we get to that section.
Lead?
League, yeah, probably, yes, league.
Oh, league, yeah, no, we'll get there, we'll, we'll get it. So, so let's do, let's do elections first and then.
First, Commissioner Rodriguez.
You want to do qualifying periods first?
That's new stuff.
However you want to do it.
New stuffs.
They're related, they're related items, so.
So, my thought is that I think it would very much, um, fall under the, the special election. I think, um, what, actually, you go first, because I think mine will go after that one a little bit.
And I, I'm not married to the idea of having to put this before voters, I just think there needs, it's too vague in our, I mean, being a representative up here, I'm obviously an interim. But it's an honor, but it's also a responsibility that I think the board has to have in appointing anyone who is considered duly qualified and goes through some kind of process. I don't recommend coin tosses, I know that was a joke, but going through a process. Because the fact is, no matter which district you look at, we're representing nearly fifty thousand people. And I don't think it is appropriate for future city commissions or this city commission to leave that process just as vague as it is. I think if there's ever a vacancy, which there will be inevitably in, in this commission, the next commission or several, there should at a minimum be, and I think Mr. Mayor, you were mentioning something about doing it through ordinance or however legislatively we, we need to enact it. There has to be some kind of process.
Let's ask the question, Mr. City Attorney, the dilemma is that, um, what I'm hearing is that we don't want to go through a process again where unusual.
No, clarification, clarification. My issue is that as it, correct me if I'm wrong, as it stands right now, it says that the commission may appoint and they select the process for that appointment. Am I correct?
That's what it says.
That's what it says. Okay, that's what I object to. I don't like the word may, and this isn't about my position, I'm referring to any one of us, any one of us.
Read the section, Mayor, just to clarify.
Please.
You're talking about this section, which is appointment, if there are less than a hundred and eighty days before the next municipal election, then the interim commission member appointed to fill the vacancy shall serve until the next municipal election. If there are more than a hundred and eighty days before the next municipal election, then the commission shall conduct a special election to fill the vacancy. The special election shall take place as soon as practicable, but no more than a hundred and eighty days from the date that the vacancy occurred.
And if I'm not mistaken, that we have to address as well because of the recent decision.
That was.
In Broward County Court.
That created the litigation.
So that, that, I, I, I don't need to, I don't mean that we need to decide tonight, okay? But I, I, I do, first of all, we have to address that, because as it stands right now, the supervisor can say, I'm not granting you ballot access. He made, the, the, the judge agreed with him, he had that authority. So that automatically can't be in there moving forward.
Well.
And then with, well, you're the attorney, I'm not, so I would defer to you all, but my whole point is, and I'm, I'm not saying it needs to be one way or another. There should be a requirement for any future commission vacancy to be filled. I am not saying it needs to be in a day because that won't allow enough time to screen, uh, uh, potential applicants. I'm not saying it has to be how it was managed the last time with the application process that you all decided up here to have. I'm just saying it isn't fair if there is a vacancy in districts one, two, three, or four in the future that the commission, this one or a future one decides, let's leave it vacant, especially given the court's decision, which is you don't have to have ballot access or he does not have to grant you ballot access. You can't leave a commission seat in a city this size vacant, in my opinion, for an extended period of time. That is basically silencing any one of the voters or the residents in those districts from having a vote up here. And I know that since I've been here, I think it's like eighty-five percent of the votes we've taken here have either been five, zero, or four, one. So there's collegiality here. But the reality is, is that when you eliminate one, you have the possibility of two twos. And I feel very strongly about it because I went through it and I appreciate that it was established at the very, uh, after, after two meetings. I think it was the right decision by all of you to do so. But whether by ordinance, charter, or messenger pigeon, I don't care how, but I think it needs to be put in somewhere that we must appoint when there is a vacancy.
I'm going to tell you, I agree with that. I agree with it because what happened here, and there's just no kind of way to say it, what happened here was so extraordinary um, that, um, um, and it was so alarming to people, um, uh, when it happened that, um, they want to see a different charter, uh, provision for this, um, that requires us to fill vacancies. The complication now is the supervisor's, uh, uh, viewpoint, which was upheld in the courts. Um, but you never know that whether the legislature has an appetite to revisit that issue. So, um, I like the idea of as soon as practicable. Um, I like the idea of not having, um, unu, not, not prohibiting this board from establishing unusual, um, qualifying periods. I like the idea of reshaping the charter along these lines, and I think it would pass.
But I can't speak to the, I think that was Commissioner Rodriguez.
I just don't know how, and I'm wondering, City Attorney, whether, uh, it might, it might be the kind of thing that you can work on and come up with some language. I can't immediately think of how to phrase this. Um, and so I'm wondering if you can, um, help us to phrase some language on this. Okay?
We'll try. I'm taking as, as good a notice as I can.
Um, we, we want to, we want to fill, we, we, we want, we want there to be, what I'm hearing is we want there to be an affirmative duty to fill vacancies. We want, uh, at least on an interim basis, we want an affirmative duty to elect as soon as practicable, which means you don't impose a, a, um, a hasty election. Uh, but we have to comply with the supervisor of elections, which may mean that you have to take out language regarding timeframe altogether. Um, and there should be a prohibition from establishing unreasonable or unusual, let's call it unusual, uh, qualifying periods. Uh, that whatever election is selected, um, um, the, the, the corresponding qualifying period should apply. Do you follow what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, see if you can't work with that a little bit and, you know, channel your Thomas Jefferson into this. Because I, 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 I can't, it's, it's a very, it's, it's, it is a bit of a conundrum. As to how to do this around the, uh, S O E's language, so. I know, I know you'll give this to somebody who will impress us. Is that, is that. Yeah, but she, she had, oh, yeah. Commissioner Rodriguez.
Kind of to finalize on that part, I think, um, what you mentioned about qualifying periods is really important. I was a little shocked when I, when I saw the one, um, that happened in the last election, so just making sure that some way, shape, or form, we do move forward into making it either follow what the other qualifying periods are or whatever that may be. Um, once, and then can I talk about what I?
Whatever you wish.
Okay, so I pulled some numbers. Basically, this is simply to plant the seed and kind of open the discussion about possibly moving our elections from March to November. We're one of the few cities that does have a March election. And I simply see it as a point of principle, we have really low turnout here in Pembroke Pine. Simply from my district, um, my, this last election, March twenty twenty-four, we've had about sixteen percent turnout, and that's including the, the primary. I wasn't able to pull the, the numbers particularly for, uh, my race itself, but, um, sixteen point eight. In November of twenty twenty-two, we're looking at around fifty-one point five percent. November twenty twenty, we're looking at seventy-nine point nine percent. And March twenty twenty, we're looking at twenty-two point three percent. So simply from those numbers, which the county percentage points are quite comparable, more or less, to that. Um, it just seems, although I am honored to have been elected this past March, I was only elected by, I believe, a hundred and seventy-nine, one thousand seven hundred seventy-nine people. And for a city this size, I don't know if that is fully representative of how much we can do for the peoples to make it easier for them to vote for the people taking this office and being the second largest city in, in Pembroke Pine and, and Broward. I know there's definitely a lot of pros, a lot of cons in, in moving that forward, and I'm sure it's been discussed at some point. Um, but simply for us to open that discussion, I want to kind of hear and, and have staff look into the, um, the statistics, what are, you know, what we can look at, uh, what might have happened in other cities, things like that.
You know, so, so this is what happens. Um, we run as nonpartisans, which is a, um, a legal requirement from the state. We have no control over that. Um, the March elections are the only nonpartisan elections there are. There was a great concern, and I have heard this from other mayors and, uh, other commissioners in others, in other cities. Um, that, um, that, um, they feel they're washed away in the partisan wave of the March elections. And that attention isn't being, isn't paid to, um, their city commission races because they're drowned out by senate races or congressional races or presidential races, when in fact, most people get about seventy percent of all of the services that they receive from government from their city. And, um, uh, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about, you know, well, but there's so many more people come out in November. Well, it's sort of like, you know, uh, there's a better circus there, it's a better attraction, there are more ads in, in T V and stuff like that. But the bottom line is, we have the same duty to, 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 in, in, at least in the state of Florida, uh, as, as good citizens. We have the same duty to vote in March as we do in August, as we do in November. The fact that people don't show up doesn't mean that there's any, that there's any difference. And I have to tell you, super voters get it and they show up because they're well informed and they do show up. And if, if, if they are a, a, a statistically accurate group, um, you will end up with pretty much the same results. Maybe some of them would be different, it would be interesting to see how, how that worked. But I got to tell you, I'd love to run in November. I myself think it's great, but I'm the only one that runs citywide. You know, so I think, I think the calculus has to be, how does this, how does this change within a district? I never had to face that question.
Uh, I do.
When I was, when I was.
I guess, yeah, well, one of the things that.
I do.
We will look forward to is having, I guess, an apples-to-apples comparison after this race to see what the numbers really are, because I, I wasn't able to pull up specifically for the district and, you know, I don't have a preference right now, I haven't made a decision as to what I want to, like, really push on, it's just simply opening for discussion, hearing.
We can bring it, we can bring in information, but most of the cities that went from March, because it, it used to be all the cities were March. During the recession, lots of cities went to November to save money. How pathetic is that? And we, we refused to change. We had this discussion years and years ago, and we said, look, things are tight, but we're, they're not that tight. And, and we stayed with March, and a lot of cities tell me all the time when I'm at the, at the, at the, the, the Broward League of Mayors or whatever, or, or, um, I run into, huh?
Running council.
Yeah, they tell me all the time. I should have had a V eight. I should, I should have stuck with March, because March was, was, was a better, uh, was a better deal all the way around. November's a complicated thing. That's Mike, he's running now in a, in a, in a, in a, in a, in a, in a November election. I think he's the first commissioner ever to run in a Mar, uh, I don't know. I don't know how it was years ago, but.
I guess, I guess.
I don't think we've ever had a Mar, a November election.
I guess my thought is whether it's easy or hard for us, that's kind of irrelevant because it's the people's choice and we decide to run for office and we know it's hard enough, like, it's a matter of cutting through the noise in November, making sure that people are aware. Um, and then overall, just having better accessibility for voters to make the, these decisions. But I get your point, I, I. But I get your point. I, I get that, you know, if, if you cared enough, you would come vote out in March.
Honestly, I'm happy to vote and, and I'm happy to run anytime. So it, it's, 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 it's up to you all. I really don't have a preference in this. I see both sides of the coin. And I tried to, you know, I did. I explained to you some of the history and I, it doesn't matter to me when we run. But, but I think, I think that Commissioner, you, you, you bring up a valid point that should be, that should be thoroughly looked at, and, uh, I support you doing that. And I suppose, it, maybe the city clerk can help us to get some, some data on voter turnout in these different elections to help the commissioner and, uh, uh, Charlie, maybe you could talk to her a little bit about what your sense of it is. And I would encourage you through your, your league contacts to talk to some of the cities that went to November. What do they think? What, to talk, maybe you already have, and to talk to some of the, uh, um, the cities that stayed in, in March. Um, some of the former, uh, folks who had to run in both cycles and talk to them, talk to residents. I'm open to it. I, I don't have a problem with it. I mean, nobody brought up term limits, but I think that that's a wonderful idea to.
If, if I may, um, on the, um, on the March discussion, I, I remember we had this discussion several years ago and, um, you had said then that it is, um, it is a disadvantage for local government to give up its March election for the following reason. State government and the home rule authority. So when you have state government overseeing, overlaying the city of Pembroke Pines, uh, if they know that there's no potential, um, challenge of their seat by a municipal official, you don't usually get the attention that, um, that we need. So what would happen is, back in the day, I'll just use Marty Carrick as his friend. He ran in August, but if he was, uh, if he had a councilperson in Davie who wanted to challenge them, that councilperson can do that in August, and then that councilperson can get their seat, uh, that race handled in November. So basically, you can challenge the state rep for not doing their job. If you lose, you have that election in November, and you only have this little two-month or three-month gap. To the, uh, cities started going, uh, towards the, uh, I want to do it on the cheap situation. And what happens is, is you disenfranchise, um, the person who doesn't have a deep pocket. Because what happens is, is the closer you get to November, the more expensive that election is going to be.
Yep.
So it actually empowers incumbency to an unfair advantage of a grassroots individual. Now, I'm a data-driven person, okay? And, uh, and my wife is even better at it. Um, I can tell you, uh, for this particular, um, uh, race, uh, in March, Commissioner Rodriguez, um, I called your totals within 100 votes, and I called mine within 90. I was off by that much, and this was a year in advance. And the reason being is because of the, um, of the type of voter that was going to be showing up. Now, in other races, I've been able to, uh, call, uh, turnout within, uh, 100 votes. And I've been doing this for a while now. I can tell you in November, this is what's going to happen. There's going to be an 80 to 90% turnout in this city. Based upon March of 15% turnout, that means 75% of the people who are voting in November have no idea who we are. They don't know Vice Mayor Good, they don't know me, they don't know the mayor. They don't know any of us. Why? Because they're not engaged in the low, in, in local. Despite the fact that 70 to 80% of everything that you need, your water to work, your police to show up, your PAHs to be fixed, or, or level government. So, um, I would, I would be very, uh, concerned about moving Pembroke Pines elections to November for all those reasons. Incumbents, they win over 90% of the time, but yet in March they don't. And for that reason, for that reason, um, I think it's healthy for an electorate to be able to have no money in their pocket, go door to door, and actually have the same advantage. Someone in November, they get all the, they get all the special interest money, they get all the mailers, and that, and the only name that they see is the one with the most amount of bucks in their pocket. And that is one of the reasons why you're seeing such a turnoff in the March elections. Because people just don't feel like they even have an opportunity to compete for, for some of these races. Um, apathy, how many, oh my goodness, how many people went unopposed at the county and state level? It's ridiculous that, that people don't want to engage in public service. But then again, you know, another, another area in, in government that people aren't wanting to sign up for? Police officers. Why? Because society isn't treating them right. That's why. So it's, it's, it's a much larger discussion other than just when should we have the election? Who knows what's going to happen in, in November? I can tell you this, that, um, District 3 has always been bigger than District 2 as far as turnout. Always has been, and the same thing held in this time. And it was actually less folks. There was a time, uh, Commissioner Rodriguez, where I received more votes in one election than, uh, at the time Commissioner Castillo received in three combined. So when we have off-cycle elections, uh, when, when we have the, the 2024 race versus the 2026 race, completely different optics. So, so when you have Districts 1 and 4 running, not in the presidential primary, but in March, and they're getting a turnout, I, I believe, um, uh, in 2018, there was, there was less than a 6% turnout for District 1. The, the total, the, the, the total votes received by some winners prior to those elections were less than 600 votes total in District 1. And yet District 1 has the same voting authority as any other, as any other commissioner up here.
Uh, I, I think there's a lot to what, uh, what Commissioner Schwartz is saying. Uh, people will, and, and, and to what everyone is saying, in November, in November elections, everyone feels like they're going to go out to vote. Uh, uh, but I was an HOA president before I ran for office, and I got to tell you, when people are happy, they stay home.
Exactly.
When people are happy, they stay home. It's only when they're agitated that they go out and vote. Uh, uh, um, so, I don't know. I think there's a lot to be said, and I also like what Commissioner Rodriguez said, which is, we really shouldn't look at it through this loop that we're, that we're talking about. This is, this is really about what the voters want. And, um,
I think.
I don't know. I, I, I'm, I'm feeling a little guilty that we had, that we, that, that we maybe were a tad, um, patronizing in saying, we want it, we want, we want a separate election, uh, uh, in a nonpartisan because we provide so many services, then we will, we will die of, of, uh, of just being ignored, and we will be the smallest fish in that pond, even though we deliver 70% of everything that, that people get in, uh, in government. And that's sort of why the legislature created nonpartisan elections in March. They understood this. It, it, it's, it's really why we have March elections. People, you know, this is when nonpartisans run. Uh, and so I think there's, I think this is a, a conversation we should sleep on a little bit and, uh, study some more. I'm glad you brought it up.
Can I just, in, in the moment, respond to, um, what Commissioner Short was saying? What you said proves the point that I'm trying to make a little bit more. That 75% of the people should know what we're doing and should participate into our election. If we had a race in November, I mean, we all know kind of how, like, the backend of all of this works. We probably would have to raise a little bit more money, but we would also be sending mailers and text messages and all, all of this to general voters. The reason people don't come out to vote, uh, it, to vote in the November elections for us is because we simply haven't had that option, and because we've never communicated that that's like, you know, a thing that put, like, could be done. I, what I'm saying is, if we had to do it in November, we would just raise money, as we always do, to communicate to those people and have a larger pool of people to communicate to. And if people are voting there, like, because they're angry about what we have or haven't done, like, anger fuels a, a vote anyways in, in both, in both, um, a March and a November race. And like, I'm not afraid of being, like, voted out because the majority of people choose not to vote for me. I have plenty of other things to do. But like, it's, it just seems that it's not representative of the community as a whole, and it's our job to make sure that people understand. And maybe out of all of this, we kind of just simply get the, the conversation that we have to do more on our part, on the city's part, to make sure that we are having people vote out in March. But nonetheless, I don't want to disenfranchise 75% of people because simply it's, they're not getting all the additional advertisement either.
Well, Commissioner.
These are points very well taken.
And, and this will be my final point.
Appreciate it.
It's, it's the home rule authority that we're losing leverage of. You, you run in November, you run in November, the state rep and the state senator could care less. Could care less about the city of Pembroke Pines, because they don't need the city of Pembroke Pines. They don't need the elected officials challenging them. They have an absolutely guaranteed, um, safe seat. And we just got through a discussion about how you make appointments. You have an election in November, right? You could potentially lose, and then three-fifths of the board as a result of that. And so i- it, it's actually going to increase, um, uh, potentially cause more harm than good. Um, but we'll move on, Mayor.
Well, let's, 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 this is a very, very good discussion. It's a very complicated issue, and there are points to be made all across the board. The, 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 the next step on this, Commissioner, if, 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 is to get you the information, to get all of us the information. Let's, let's look. We might learn something here. I myself don't care. I, I'm as happy in March as I am in, uh, in November. I, from my perspective, it doesn't matter, but I'm the only one that runs citywide. So you all have to make this decision as to what you think is best, uh, uh, for the districts. Okay. Great discussion. We will have, uh, items coming back to us, and that's terrific. Next on the agenda is reports from the league representatives.
Yes, Mayor. So, um, it was the Executive Committee that did the ASRO deal to us. It was the Executive Committee. It never came to the general. It was the Executive Committee. And so, um,
Wow.
At the appropriate time, I'll express with your permission on behalf of all of us, right? But I think going forwards, that's just not going to ever happen again, ever happen again. So who's, who's, uh, who's going to the luncheon tomorrow in Plantation?
I cannot.
Okay.
Are you going?
The, the.
I cannot.
Do me, okay, that, that's fine. Well, so I, I think there's a time and a place to have that discussion. I don't think tomorrow is that time or the place. I think that now that, now that I've figured out who was involved in it, I think, I think those conversations could be held at a, um, uh, in, in a, in a better forum uh, to, to, um, express our, um, concern that it shouldn't happen to any municipality like that going forward.
Okay.
Because what if, what if they did the garbage deal like that, too?
Well, no, I mean, who, who, who knows?
Oh, or whatever else is going to happen. It, it, you know, there, there's advocacy.
I have to tell you, borders on impertinence.
Yeah. Yeah, that.
To, to, uh, to step it, uh, right? I mean, it just, I, I was shocked when I heard that. Okay. Anything else, other than, all right? Um, reports of the, uh, city manager?
And no items, Mayor.
All five of us agree. Uh, and, uh, reports of the city attorney?
I do, Mr. Mayor, just briefly, if you will. Uh, in recent days, I've sent you some, uh, privileged and confidential memoranda with regard to two pending litigation matters, one of which is the Calix case, which is a suit in which the city was sued by Calix. Uh, as you know, the jury rendered a verdict in this matter, um, adverse to the city of Pembroke Pines. And that occurred on August the 23rd. Just for the record, in conjunction with conversations with our risk manager, HR director, as well as the city manager, and with special counsel, we were, we will file post-trial motions that we believe will be considered by the court. Notwithstanding the fact that we'll be filing motions in connection with that matter, uh, we also need for the commission this evening to, by motion, authorize the filing of what's called a notice of appeal. To the extent we want to bookmark a potential appeal in this matter, uh, there's a 30-day fuse to do so. And to the extent that I would ask, as your city attorney for, and chief legal officer for a motion to file a notice, it will enable us to, um, move forward with regard to potential resolution of the matter prior to payment of any judgment, which is yet to be entered by the court, but it was entered by a jury. And I'd ask that you consider that this evening without great detail. Uh, I, I'd also simultaneously suggest, in the event that there's a need to have a shade meeting on the subject through a special counsel, I'll ask for it this evening. So your motion would be to authorize the, uh, filing of a notice of appeal uh, and to schedule as needed a shade meeting under Chapter 286 to discuss potential settlement options in the event that they arise.
Lawyers need a motion.
Motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Hernandez. There's second.
Rodriguez, I'll second.
Sorry, I'm sorry. A motion made by Commissioner Rodriguez, second by Commissioner Hernandez.
Yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You have your, uh, your.
Thank you, Mayor. And one other added, the Con Ed case. As you know, Mr. Dodge and I were in mediation this past week as a recontinued mediation on the 28th of August. Uh, I need your advice for those two commissions who've never been to a shade meeting. You're in a public sunshine meeting. I'm asking for a shade meeting under state law that allows us to go into a closed-door session with the city manager and with, uh, the special counsel for the purpose of discussing potential settlement options and cost expenses associated with the case. Uh, we have a mediated, um, recommendation, which I cannot discuss in public, which is still privileged. Uh, to the extent that I would ask that by motion, the mayor and commission authorize the create, the, the, the calling of a shade meeting for the 18th of September, at which time Jeremy Springheart, who is one of our special counsels from Orlando, uh, will appear with me, with you, to discuss the potential resettlement. And the way that it's framed by law is I'm asking for your advice and guidance. Um, for those new members of the commission, what happens is if, if this evening, which I ask that you do is the chief legal officer to schedule to authorize the shade meeting under the statute, um, that, uh, you meet in public, you then repair to a closed-door meeting with no one else in the room except the court reporter, yourselves, myself, city manager, and the, uh, special counsel. Um, we take guidance in the closed-door session. No votes can be taken. And then to the extent that there is a potential recommendation for resolution, it's then aired publicly when you repair back to the public meeting. So tonight, as a matter of, your city attorney asks that you, um, authorize a Chapter 286 shade meeting in the Con Ed case, which is the case where the roofs were, um, in some very serious condition in the charter school system, uh, for the meeting of the 18th of September.
I'll, I'll move that. I just have a question for the city attorney.
Let's get a second first. Is there, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rodriguez.
How much time do you, do you anticipate needing for this, uh, wrap-up?
No more than 45 minutes.
Uh, Mayor, would, 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 prior to the 18th, because that, that's a second budget hearing, and I, usually the second meeting in September is kind of heavy. Uh, can we go, can we go early, say at, um, 5:30?
Earlier? I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Five, 5:30.
We want to start at 5:30.
You tell me. I'm your city attorney, whatever you need.
Anybody have a problem?
And, and, yeah, and also with that, if, uh, uh, so that we can move that meeting along as quickly as possible. If you can provide, uh, Commissioner Hernandez and Rodriguez the transcripts of the prior shade, so they could be prepared going in, so we don't have to, um.
We don't do transcripts.
I can't produce the transcript because they're sealed.
Oh, on that side, okay. I, I do, I do recall when I first got elected, reading some.
He, he can brief them, though.
We can brief you, but I can't unseal the transcript.
Thank you. So if we could, if we could at least get them up.
Mr. Springheart's pretty good on his feet. He'll, he'll brief, uh, all of us.
He'll be helpful, thank you.
He'll refresh us.
It would.
All right, so there's a motion, a session, uh, and a second for a shade meeting.
And, and Mayor, I will, I will work with the clerk to do the appropriate advertising for 5:30, if that's the case.
Thank you very much. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Commission items.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioner Verst. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, before we continue, I'm, um, I wanted to introduce you this evening to our new, um, HR director, who's been here this evening sitting in the back, Carla Maggio. Uh, you can stand. Uh, you can stand.
How are you?
Welcome aboard.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Okay, Commissioner Hernandez, you're up.
Briefly, um, uh, Mr. Manager.
Read your item into the records.
Oh. Well, one second. Item number one, discussion and update on the status of school traffic management in the city of Pembroke Pines, and to include an update by the police department and others as needed.
You're recognized.
Okay, um, I've had these discussions already with our, uh, chief, uh, Vargas, um, with our city manager, uh, with Ms. Sorenson, Assistant City Manager, and with Assistant City Manager Stam. Um, I, I understand it's a citywide issue, but I'm particularly asking about District Four. I have seen, uh, a reduction, uh, and this also includes, uh, Commissioner Rodriguez's district. However, if some, I, I think it's Ms. Sorenson, but also Mr. Stam, I'd like to call you guys up if possible, Mr. Manager. Um, it's related to one particular school that I have received numerous, uh, calls, uh, uh, text messages, emails about. Um, and I just want to have on record what the update is on that particular school, because there are lots of parents that are asking questions. I've directed them, um, to the administration, not ours, uh, but the schools, but specific, uh, specifically, uh, Mr. Stam, Assistant City Manager Stam. Somerset South, Pines Boulevard, one hundred ninety-six Avenue. Um, I understand we approved on June eighteenth, uh, the west, the use of, uh, West Pines Soccer Park. What is the status of that? And I understand that Assistant City Manager Sorenson also has, uh, informations. I don't care which one of you answered, just if, if we could get a quick update.
Uh, Mike Stam, Assistant City Manager, um, so, first thing is, uh, the commission did approve the use of the park to queue traffic. So they're in the process of doing that. Uh, there's emails going around at latest today, discussion of relocating some utility lines, Comcast is some other things that are there. Um, and Christina can give you the specific dates. This is something that was proposed last year, um, and they've been moving towards it. I will note before Christina steps in, that normally during the first three weeks, it's a little bit of chaos. Um, it typically starts to get better after Labor Day. Uh, one of the things that happens that specifically at that school is the lefts at one hundred ninety-six get restricted, and they come back and make U-turns. So parents think they can, uh, cut the line by making the second U-turn instead of the first U-turn. And some of the issues that I was discussing with the mayor in terms of blocking entrances to La Hambra and the fire station. Um, we're confident once this gets.
We did something similar with Pasadena, did we not? Pasadena states, uh, for the north Somerset, we put security gates.
Well, we put, yeah, those, so there's, there's a gate on the north campus. Um, normally what happens, uh, Commissioner, is I say this, but typically by October, um, Mr. Dodge, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the date in October when they, uh, the funding is tied to the date, was that?
It's the twenty-day count.
Yeah, so they, they do the final count. By then, parents have made their decision where they're going to school, if they're going to stay at Somerset, if they're going to go back to a traditional school. We often see enrollment fall at some of our charter schools, uh, during those periods of time. So this month of September is really kind of in flux. We had hoped that the project was going to be completed. There were some materials that were ordered that were delayed, and then they also found some utilities in places they didn't actually think they were.
Uh, let me keep you here for a second. Franklin Academy, Stacking Roads, I visited the campus, I, I, I toured it, they're optimistic. Do we have any other up, I met with them two weeks ago, but do we have any other updates?
I talked to their administrator, um, they had some issues at the county in terms of permitting and some title items that they had to get cleared up. I was told that they've been, planned to commit, uh, begin construction in January. Um, they can operate while doing construction, it's on the parcel to the east of them, uh, with very little disruption. But again, we will, that we literally, after we, after we get through the month of September, I hate to say it, I know it's a month, but we always see improvement after that. Uh, bus ridership goes up, it, it's, it's like a trickle-down effect on all those things. Parents don't want to sit in a queue anymore, they understand the queue. Um, and then coupled with, with what Christina can talk about, we will definitely see improvement in that whole area. And, and for the record, when we first started looking at traffic out here, and I mentioned it at our last meeting, we have twelve thousand kids west of one hundred and seventy-eighth. We've got multiple charter schools, we've got multiple traditional schools, uh, public schools. Um, and almost every one of those people are not necessarily coming from that area. So it does put a strain on our roads. Um, we try to find solutions with them, we have busing relationships with, uh, Somerset, with Franklin, but a lot of that stuff takes time. So, for example, they need to fill the next bus, so they don't operate a next bus until they get enough demand for that bus. And that usually happens during this month of September. So I'll let Christina talk specifically about what she's discussed with them today. But I would anticipate you seeing dramatic improvements over the next fifteen, twenty days.
Okay.
Good evening, Christina Sorenson, Assistant City Manager. So the project that you're speaking about for Somerset South is the utilization of West Pine Soccer Park and moving a lot of the cars off of the roads and into the park for stacking. Um, that project was supposed to be ready for safe school, the contractor had delays. The latest I got out of sitting in this meeting and emailing me was they're looking at September thirtieth as a possible rollout for that project. Um, I'm, I'm pretty confident that when that happens, it'll alleviate a lot of the issues we have, because some of them are along one-nine-six, which is just a one-way. So we're hoping to get those cars off of the road. I have stressed to the school to keep the lines of communication open with their parents, but also not to commit to a date until they're certain that they're going to attain it, so we don't have any confusion. So I'm just going to continue to work with them, and hopefully September thirtieth is the last push out for that.
I, I appreciate it, I, and I don't need to bother you guys anymore. I really appreciate that you, you, the three of us always speak into the chief. I did want to give a shout out to our police officers, uh, especially around Silver Trail and, and, and the schools that I've passed through. It's probably a hundred and fifteen degrees out there, you're fully uniformed, and you're directing traffic, and not everyone's really nice to you when you're doing so. So I did want to congratulate you on, and thank you, Mr. Manager, also for, um, whenever I reach out to you, answer the phone and, and let me know what it is that you all are doing. So thank you.
Commissioner Hernandez, one last thing, you weren't on the dais, um, but, um, I think about eighteen months ago, the commission passed an ordinance regarding blocking public rights, public rights away. Um, our police department, uh, the first couple of weeks, they're nice, they give warnings, I'm not going to speak for chief, but enforcement starts to change, and behaviors start to change.
Yeah.
Um, so you may actually start getting complaints about tickets, right, Chief?
I'd rather have complaints about tickets because they are creating a hazard for other drivers than
but.
Something that's not in the city's control. That's, that's part of the point here, we, we are not holding, uh, a construction project with a major educational institution. That's out, out of our hands, we allowed it, we have voted for it, so. Um, but yes, I, I actually would not mind, uh, more enforcement out there. Um, because there are issues, uh, with folks going into, uh, private communities or, uh, completely, I can't remember the exact one. It's in front of, uh, it's just to the south of Silver Trail, if you're coming out of the Silver Lakes area. Some folks just don't care, and they block four lanes of traffic. Folks that are trying to make a left into Silver Lakes, folks that are trying to make a right or a left out of Silver Lakes. Um, some people honk, others use one finger, you know, it doesn't look great. And, and I'm, I'm looking forward to, if necessary, yeah, this one, one finger. Um, they, I'm looking forward to, if, if enforcement is necessary, I'll be with you guys. So thank you so much.
Agent Allen. Your business opened, can I just take a moment to say something? Um, I am really, really proud of the way this commission is coming together. And, uh, we're starting to form, um, the kind of teamwork that I think, uh, is going to take us far. Once we're done with the budget and charter review, we're going to get busy with, uh, strategic planning. And this is where we're going to lay out our, uh, our joint vision for the future of the city. And every single point of view here is relevant. Every single point of view, every single comment that we received is going to be listened to and taken advantage of, and, uh, uh, that's going to be a lot of work, a lot of work. There will be many, many meetings with strategic planning. But once we have a plan, if it's formulated correctly, every decision we make here will be in some way, shape, or form connected to the plan. Otherwise, the plan's not comprehensive. So, um, I'm really, really looking forward to it, and I just want to thank you all for, uh, um, for the hard work that you're putting in, because it's showing we are coming together as a team, and it makes me very, very proud to see it. Anything further? We'll adjourn, thank you.